All right. Suzanne, you ready? All right, today is November 16th.
Hey, Rob.
Twenty-
Kim here.
You can turn the volume up on the mics.
And you're testing, testing. Can you hear me yet?
Still not working.
Sean shaking your head saying no.
Can you hear me now? Testing, testing.
Dan, can you hear me?
I can hear you, I just can't hear Val, Val's not coming through.
Can you hear me, Suzanne?
I can hear you, Robert.
You just can't hear Val.
Well, it's still kind of, it's kind of, it's really low.
Try that one, see if this makes a difference.
Something's not right with the mics.
Well, testing one, two, three.
I hear it now.
Much better, thank you. And it looks like Councilmember Path needs to be promoted to a panelist.
I'll take care of it.
All right. We're gonna restart here.
Bang.
All right. Today is November 16th, 2020. I will briefly review the order process for this meeting of the City Council. A call to order and roll call is self-explanatory, pledge of allegiance is self-explanatory. Swearing in of the new council member will be delayed until the election is certified or Thursday, November 19th. However, Ms. Alfieri will fully participate as council-elect in our budget presentations and discussions tonight, since no business decisions will be made tonight, and that's in order to assist staff planning. We will have a DDA 2021 budget presentation. This presentation was added to the original council intent so that questions could be asked of human presenters instead of not being able to ask timely clarification questions over a piece of paper, the report, in other words. This was added per our procedures by Mr. Zuluaga and the mayor. 2021 budget discussions. Council's past two budget sessions were first draft run-throughs of an initial budget for clarifications. This discussion now includes all seven councils to clarify further and to suggest policy changes and directions, if any, including all seven members' perspectives. There will be no business decisions made in this agenda item, but certainly it is possible that some consensus may be derived for staff action to be considered in a future public hearing of this draft budget as modified, possibly. I call to order this meeting of the City Council. Suzanne, would you call roll?
Thank you. Mayor Carr?
Here.
May pretend the bar. Councilmember Keys? Councilmember Neal? Councilmember Path?
Here.
Councilmember Zuluaga?
Present.
Council-elect Stephanie Alfieri?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will now say the pledge of allegiance, please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in my heart.
Thank you. At this time, we have a presentation on the agenda. Do we have somebody at the back door? I do not see Tanner Coy, who is going to be present to give the presentation at this time.
I wonder whether the timing was notified correctly.
Oh, 5:30. Do you have his number to text him?
Just text him.
Maybe Ms. Alfieri might have his text. I have his number, but I don't have.
I'm working on it right now.
So understand, we're waiting for input from the county election official to proceed with the swearing-in of council-elect Alfieri, but the votes and the ballots were relayed to us after election night were such that there is a certainty about the outcome, but we will pause per advice of our city attorney.
This is council-elect Alfieri. He will be just a few brief moments if we can bear with him.
We will do that, because we don't have a huge agenda, and he's next on it.
We have some time.
Thank you.
Mayor, so, Tony Perry is asking if there's a republic around this meeting.
No. Not tonight. When we have a public hearing, we'll definitely be doing that.
Mayor Carr?
Yes.
I have, never mind, I think you just answered the question. We have audience wanting to know if there'll be participation allowed.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we were talking back and forth here in City Hall about that. Thank you.
I can sing a song.
I'm gonna eat my sandwich while we're waiting, if nobody cares.
Do we have a hard copy of the updated proposed budget? Suzanne, anywhere in the House?
I think Emily is on, let's ask Emily.
We don't have a hard copy, but I have it, I can bring it up and share it on the screen, if that's okay.
Well, we have that on our tablets, but.
Pending our findings tonight, we will we will have changes potentially, and then the staff will form up the budget for us for Thursday.
Yeah, I didn't want to print anything until it was ready.
Yes, thank you. As we've discussed, I always want mine in two-sided.
Right. Everyone's will be here.
Oh, good. Save a couple bucks there.
Hey, Jason, people are asking for jokes while we're doing.
Well, the joke time's over, Tanner's arrived.
Okay.
But yeah, I'm up for that. Has somebody got a quick joke?
I do have one I heard on the radio the other day.
Of course.
What did the Governator say when he was leaving Thanksgiving dinner? Hasta la vista, gravy.
He broke up. You broke up, you're gonna have to retell your joke, and I know it's always dubious doing that the second time around, but we couldn't hear the punchline or the setup.
So what did the Governator of California say when he left Thanksgiving dinner? Hasta la vista, gravy.
Oh.
La vista gravy.
Went over my head, Jason, sorry.
La vista gravy.
Hasta la vista.
It's a play on Terminator.
Oh, okay, you have to be movie savvy, huh? Oh, good.
I see I printed far more than needed. Oh, it's fine here, let me, I'll give these to you in order. One, two. And four. Here's this one, too, Robert.
Thank you.
For the sake of time. You get six copies.
Do you have them in digital PDF?
Hey, Rob, is the mic on?
Hello?
Can you hear me?
Do a test, test.
Hello? Test?
Yes, sounds good.
Okay. Like I said, we're at the presentation of the DDA 2021 budget presentation, and sir, will you identify yourself and your municipality?
Tanner Coy. Here as Treasurer for the Woodland Park Downtown Development Authority.
How's that sound out there on Zoom land? Can you hear that? Louder.
It's not good.
Yeah.
Tanner Coy, here with the Woodland Park Downtown Development Authority.
What's better?
Okay. Well, good evening, Mayor, Council, and whoever else is out there. I'm here to review the DDA's requested 2021 budget. To begin, hopefully everyone can see this document here on the screen. It begins, the far-left column is a list of revenue and expenditure accounts, and then we have the 2015 actuals, all the way through 2021 requested budget figures. This is so that you'll have actual historical data for your own reference, as we review the numbers and look at why we've requested the 2021 budget that we have. This number here, this 2020 year-end projection, this would be, this is actually the beginning fund balance, was recently updated, and that's why it's in red. This is new from my last draft, so everything else is in 2020's year-end projections, is as I had last submitted it to the city. Although I noticed in the draft budget that was sent out today, some of these numbers are not the same. They're very close, but if you notice any discrepancies, they're fairly minor, and you can contact me with questions if you have any. The 2021 budget really, I think, is the focus for the evening, and so to begin, I will say if we close out the 2020 year as projected, our beginning fund balance will be this $1.28 million figure at the top. We project $735,294 in total TIF revenue. That is derived from the assessed value on the preliminary certification of values provided by the assessor, and the 78.357 mils that were levied in the DDA's district in 2019, until I have a final certification from the assessor in December, and certification of mils in December. This is really just a best guess, based on the current information, but those things are subject to change somewhat, so. We always budget for some lost revenue to abatements. Some years, we don't have abatements, some years, we've had, I want to say, up to $40,000, so plug in eight there, and $1,000 in interest income. That gives us total revenue of 728,294. Total funds available, 2,008,000. You'll note, no payroll expenditures are planned in this 2021 budget. That is consistent with the past few years, going back to 2017. We've proposed $14,000 in beautification. 127,200 in TIF reimbursements. This, I believe, is also a discrepancy from what is in the draft budget you were provided earlier. It's something I had in an earlier draft budget that was approved by the board, and when I went back and reviewed all the TIF reimbursement agreements that are in place with the DDA right now, and looked up current assessed values and did the math, it looks like we should be budgeting 127,200 for total TIF reimbursements. No telephone charges, no subscriptions or dues. 5,000 in professional services, 25,000 for legal fees, 350 for information technology services, 150 for advertising and legal, travel training of 500, county treasurer fees, 20,880. This is simply a percentage of revenue, and supplies of $250. Also, a new figure is this Woodland Station improvements. I've plugged 64,000 in here as opposed to the 30 that was in our prior draft, and I'll explain that here in just a little bit. These are debt service payments on various outstanding debts of the DDA. Total expenditures and bottom line. 1.28 million in the ending fund balance, of which 1,060,194 is the book value of Woodland Station property, land held for resale, leaving an unrestricted unassigned cash reserve of 220,453. Okay, so that, those are the basics. Let me see if I can figure out how to change tabs here. Okay. I went back and watched the City Council's special meeting of October 21st and heard the discussion that you all had around the DDA's budget. The direction at that point seemed to be, take all discretionary expenditure items of the DDA's to zero. A number of those items were identified at that meeting, and so I put this chart together to put a little focus on that and see exactly what has happened with DDA and discretionary spending over the years. If, going back to that meeting, a number of accounts were identified as discretionary, and forgive me, I meant to include them on this sheet, but I did not. Beautification, which is this year. Subscriptions and dues. Professional services. Information technology, advertising and legal. Notices, and travel and training and supplies, and Woodland Station improvements, which at that time was a $30,000 number. I have gone back and pulled some historical data and included a few other lines in what I'm presenting here as the discretionary expenditure accounts, so not only all of those that were listed by the council, but also telephone charges, which would be this blank right here, if you could see the names, account names. This would be telephone, subscriptions and dues, and also all of the payroll expense. Payroll is discretionary. We used to have it, we do not now, we could have it again, it's at the discretion of the board and the council. If you look at 2015's total discretionary spending, this is back when the city and DDA shared staff, staff that primarily worked for the DDA, and total discretionary spending of the DDA that year was $59,965, of which, no money went into Woodland Station, no money went into beautification. It was all payroll and a handful of other discretionary accounts. In 2016, staff resigned. The board made the decision not to hire more staff, but in order to save costs and take some other corrective measures to change direction and posture of the organization, the DDA has not retained executive director or their administrative assistant ever since 2016. So 2016, you'll see payroll cost was approximately half of what it had been the prior year. Not retaining staff also allowed us to save money in some other accounts. Total discretionary spending of the DDA that year, down $2,155 to $57,810. Going forward is where we see real savings. By not employing staff and running the DDA as volunteers, we have saved a tremendous amount of money, particularly through payroll, which has allowed us to put some money back into the community through beautification and Woodland Station improvements. 2017, you'll see $1,000 in beautification, $70 in Woodland Station improvements. Our total discretionary spending was $1,699, that was down $58,266 from two years prior. You can see in 2018, how those numbers add up, we saved $50,000 in discretionary spending over 2015. 2019's actuals, $44,000 less in discretionary spending, and that includes $13,268 in improvements to the property. 2020 projected, $14,565, thus with $6,000 in Woodland Station improvements, and $5,000 in beautification, down $45,000 from 2015, four years prior. This year is different. This year, as you pointed out in prior meeting, we budgeted $14,000 for beautification, and we had $30,000 in Woodland Station improvements, which caught the attention of council. That's $44,000 more in investment in the community than we've had in some prior years. I've changed that $30,000 in Woodland Station improvements to $64,000, as you can see here. Combined, that would total $84,250 in discretionary spending, up $24,000 from 2015, six years prior. If this budget were approved, and if all that money were actually spent, since 2015, our total reduction in discretionary spending would still total $175,661. It's a lot of savings. That's all come because the board has worked hard as volunteers to save a lot of money. Thought I would point that out. Are there any questions at this point?
I have one. So Tanner, what's, what is the beautification specifically, and what is the Woodland Station improvement specifically?
Okay, that's next, I'm coming up to that.
Yeah, I think those details would be important for us to consider, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Just wanted to make sure so far, how I've broken this down to illustrate discretionary spending over the years is clear.
Councilmember Zuluaga?
One more comment on this. So I heard you articulate pretty carefully that the four, and I know you're gonna go into it, but that the $14,000 and the $64,000 are investments into the community as opposed to discretionary spending, is that correct?
Yes, I referred to them that way.
Great, I look forward to hearing that next sentence.
Bear with me while I look over here. Okay. Now, if you see the document before you, I've shortened this, it's the same as the first document, budget worksheet here. I've just taken out all the prior years, I'm showing only 2020 and the 2021 requested budget, with some explanation of the discretionary, proposed discretionary expenditures. To begin, we propose zero spending on payroll, and I'd like to point out that when the DDA did employ staff, and so did the city, that staff was shared. The DDA paid one-third, the city paid two-thirds of the salary, and so the payroll costs you had seen in the prior documents were the one-third costs paid by the DDA. When not retaining those employees, and having not retained them for so many years, the total savings to the DDA and to the city combined are $854,001 in payroll costs. That's a lot of money. That's a lot of money. And we do not intend to reverse course there. We plan to continue, at least at this point, without that staff and to continue to save that money. And that's, that's why there is no money budgeted for payroll, as it adds up and allows us to do other, perhaps more valuable, things for the community.
Tell us about those, please, expenditures.
Well, sorry, I rushed through, this looks like I skipped beautification, but for now, let me skip that and come back to it. I'd like to tell you about professional services. This is in lieu of payroll costs, since the DDA no longer has a direct staff employed by the organization. For basic administrative services, we work with an independent contractor. That person is the administrative assistant to the board, and their invoices are usually between $200 and $300 per month. They publish all of the agendas, drive around and physically post them on buildings in town before our meetings, send out the public notice emails with board packets and everything that that person has put together with the documents that the board provides. They publish that on the website as well. They make sure that our meetings are recorded, they operate the equipment here in City Hall to stream the meetings, and they also produce the minutes of our meetings. And once approved and signed, they publish those meetings on the DDA's website. Those are actions that, for some time, the DDA board was doing. I'm one of the members who was very active in that, as a volunteer, and it was something I was pleased to do, but something of a burden for a volunteer to take on all of that work. So the board recognized that and has since worked with independent contractors to manage those tasks. That's what this cost is. Without this, if this is zeroed out, you're effectively asking the board members to handle all the administrative tasks of the organization as volunteers, prohibited by statute, by state statute, from collecting any compensation. IT, we budget $350. Year-to-date, we're at $179.40, the computer's rounded to 179. That money is what it costs us to maintain a DDA website. Dot easy dot com is the host. WWW.WPDDA.org is the domain, and along with that website, there are a number of email addresses provided at that annual cost, and those emails are used as the official public email addresses for board members. So official correspondence is tracked in those accounts. That's the cost. We put an extra 100 and some odd dollars in there, just in the off-chance something needs to be changed or modified with the website, we have to hire somebody to reprogram it or fix it or whatever, just to be on the safe side. So that's the black and white of it. This $150 is for DDA news- This $150 is for DDA newsletters. We don't usually expend that full amount. Looks like this year we will. The Mountain Jackpot charges the DDA $25 to publish a newsletter. The Board has seen this as something of a transparency issue wherein the Board can provide updates to the community, published in the paper with any, any current events, things that may need to be communicated to the public. It's purely discretionary. Again, that's $25 per newsletter every other month, and that totals $150. This year, we did not use all that money on newsletters. In fact, I'm not sure we had any newsletters. And the Board did authorize expenditure of that funds to sponsor the community events calendar published in the jackpot, so that the calendar of, of community events would again be published and our community would see things that are being planned, that they can go and attend and hopefully get out and about as they feel comfortable with. $500 for travel and training. This is just traditional expenditure that lately we've, in recent years, we've, we've spent only a portion of. Some years, we don't spend any. Some years, we have some. I don't think we've yet to exceed $500. What is called travel and training, the Board has only used for certain special meetings of the Board. Once, a few years ago, when deliberating, I believe it was a possible bond issue to refinance debt, debt owed to the city, there was a big work session held out at the golf course, and the council was invited to attend. In fact, almost all, if not all, of the City Council attended. The DDA Board attended. We had Conrad Freeman from Vector Bank attend, and some food was provided. That cost a couple hundred dollars. Earlier this year, when, after taking possession of the cog car, we had, the DDA had received numerous requests from business owners in the area to lease the car. We were receiving proposals to, to lease the car. And the Board was faced with some decisions about what to do with the car. What's the, what are the appropriate uses? What will we consider? What will we not, et cetera? Should it be a historical artifact? Should it be available to the public for use? Should it be rented out to commercial use? And there was a retreat held. That retreat was open to the public. Quite a number of people were in attendance who had interest in the future of that cog car. And the meeting was held at the Woodland Country Lodge. Again, some food was provided. I think the total cost was $248 or so. So.
So that's partially community engagement, is what you're saying?
Correct. If the meeting is held, wherein the community is invited, and it's perhaps an evening meeting or over lunch period, we have an allowance for that. We do not travel with it. We do not train with it. At least, we haven't. Woodland station improvements and beautification, these really are the biggies.
Supplies, you went.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. Supplies. Okay. We haven't spent any money on supplies. I continue to budget it and the Board approves it. This is, on occasion, I print hard copies. As I did tonight, I showed up here with eight hard copies of four pieces of paper. I pay for that. My company pays for that. That's my toner. That's my paper. And other Board members on occasion do similar things. It's just for the sake of having hard copies available for the Board and for the public. When we meet, I also have to buy batteries for the recorders that I use as redundant recordings, et cetera. So far, I've donated all that, so have all the Board members. We've never asked for reimbursement, but I leave it there in the event we have some significant cost that needs to be reimbursed. Beautification and woodland station improvements, these are the biggies. And this is really important. This is primarily because of the effort to develop woodland station. Right now, we are, and the DDA has been negotiating, actively working with and negotiating with development party. We are on the brink of executing an exclusive negotiating agreement that will set the stage for disposition and development agreement negotiations and drafting of a draft disposition and development agreement. If successfully negotiated, that agreement will be coming to the council for your review and your approval. The process of negotiating those agreements, ultimately that disposition and development agreement, requires both parties, the developer and the authority, to discuss, negotiate, and ultimately agree to the responsibilities, the obligations of each party. The obligations of each party are exactly that, what each party is obligated to do under that agreement once executed. The DDA needs to be in a position, financially postured, to perform whatever their obligations are that are agreed to. If we do not have any money in the budget at all, that has already been discussed and approved by the various authorities that must approve it, being the Board of Directors and the City Council, then as we enter into negotiations for disposition and development of the property, we will not be able to commit anything to the developer. We will not be able to agree to any DDA obligations. We will not be able to assist with surveyors, with engineering of drainage, with drawing up a site plan, extending utilities, or any of the other things that are typically expected of a downtown development authority to assist with development. If that number, that woodland station improvements number is struck and made to zero, or anything less than what we reasonably should put in there, and I would argue $64,000 is probably not enough, but it's what we have, then we're in a position of saying to the developer as we negotiate terms. For, for instance, he may say, "Okay, DDA, I agree to your proposed purchase price of the property of 1. whatever million, and I will pay you that. But I want you to hire the surveyor for surveying the property," so that we, which will be required prior to subdivision, "and I want you to pay for the engineering costs for planning the extension of public utilities and for engineering the drainage." The Board may say, "We're not fully prepared to do that, but we agree to fund half of that engineering." And the developer may say, "Okay, deal."
Let me interrupt you for a second. You had these numbers down, $14,000, and it used to be 30, now it's $64,000. They must be based on some reality estimates that you have, because it just can't be an unlimited "we think, we think." I'm certain you've got some real data that you're working from here. Maybe you could explain that instead of the theoreticals.
Well, it's really based on theoretical. It's posturing for what is to come. Because if, back to what I was saying, if we don't have $64,000 in that budget, then we cannot agree to fund any part or anything, any of the work going forward, which is the role of the DDA per City Council and the contract between the council and the DDA. The DDA is stuck in development mode. We have to advance that property and the development plans with it. And if we don't have a budget for that when dealing with a developer, then we can't assist. And any promises we make are not truly in good faith, because we are in no position to, to guarantee them. All we can say is, "Well, sir, yes, we agree to fund half of those costs if you can go convince the council at such time in the future to allow us to." And for a developer, that's as good as no guarantee at all. He's looking for a binding contract.
So we went from seven to 13 to 10 to 30. Now it's 64. I'm worried that that's just theoretical, based on we want as much as possible. I mean, you might as well put a half million dollars in there without any backup to talk about that. I understand you're trying to give yourself some flexibility, but within days here, we've seen it change from 30, which is also rejected by the council, up to 64 now. I'm, I'm, I'm asking for some basis for at least that leap of faith, and I'm certain it's based on some realities that you're dealing with.
If you'll notice, the preliminary budget approved by the Board and submitted to the council included total TIF revenues of $696,000. At that time, I had not been given a certification of values from the assessor, and I simply carried over, I'm sorry, this is the, the, there was another column. In a prior draft, the original 2021 proposed budget included this revenue figure, carried over from 2020. That was a limiting, somewhat limiting, number. The $30,000 was the most we could put into woodland station improvements and not take anything from the cash reserve. Continue to grow the reserve fund by, it is some hundreds of dollars. After receiving a preliminary certification of values, our adjusted budgeted revenue for 2021 is now $735,000. That's almost $40,000 more dollars. Most of that has gone into woodland station improvements because it is our expectation, mine, and frankly, the Board hasn't seen this yet. They do not know that I've plugged that in here. I did it just recently, as I've restructured this, and I will be bringing it back to the Board for their review and approval pending the outcome of the meeting tonight. The reason, though, is because we can reasonably expect that the DDA will have significant costs in helping to develop that property, should we be successful in reaching an agreement with the developer. $64,000 will not be enough. There's no way. I mean, we will ultimately likely expend at least a million dollars on public infrastructure. This is just scratching the surface. This is planning. This is engineering. This is doing our part to bring about the multimillion dollar development of the property that is the goal.
So I have a question, if I may come in?
Go ahead.
Mr. Path.
Oh, um, tell me, I, I totally understand the situation where you need to be able to make a good faith agreement, but my question is, why is this lying out of necessary when, and why would you not be able to make such a commitment with cash reserve in hand?
Because if the council has not approved the budget with those expenditures included, then we're unable to commit to the expenditures. The most we'll.
And then I'm asking, if I may interrupt, I'm asking, why with a cash reserve are you not able to do that?
Because my understanding is that our authority to expend funds is limited to the expenditures budgeted. We are not authorized to expend cash reserves without coming back to council for supplemental appropriation, which we're happy to do. The problem is on the developer side. They, to them, that's, there might as well not be an agreement. If we don't have the approval to execute our end of the bargain, then it's not really a binding agreement.
I, I, I get that, Tanner. And that's very well understood by me, and I, I think most people understand that.
Okay.
So what you're saying is that you may not commit the cash reserves for these purposes? I mean, it seems that the cash reserves are set aside precisely for these purposes, to me, but maybe there's something I'm missing here.
Well, I, that's not my understanding, no. My understanding is that the, the DDA Board is authorized to spend only the money that is approved in the budget by the council. It does not mean we have to expend those funds, but we can. Anything not budgeted for expenditure cannot be spent without a supplemental appropriation approved by the council. So whatever's in the reserve will stay in the reserve until the council approves the expenditures of those funds.
So would you explain to me then, the purpose of the cash reserve? As it sits right now, part of any expenditure fundings that we would approve?
Well, that's a pretty broad question. In general, I'd say.
It is. It is, because I have no, I have no idea.
Okay.
What its purpose is. So yes, I was, I was intentionally broad.
My, my understanding of it is that reserve is very much the same as the city's need for an unrestricted, unassigned reserve. What do you do with that money? It's not budgeted for expenditure, but it's there. That's your reserve. Now, in the event that, let's say, the DDA falls in hard times, there's a terrible recession, property values plummet, and we see revenues decline as a result, well, good thing we have some reserve, right? We can pay debts at least maybe for a year, or some, some debts. But that would have to come to council. The DDA doesn't have the authority to say, "Oh, we need this money. Let's go spend it." They have the authority to say, "Oh, we need this money. Let's go ask council for the authority to spend it." It's there if needed, but that, that authority will rest with the council.
So in terms we understand, you'd be asking for supplemental?
Correct. It's the same as your reserve fund, but you don't have to go to a higher authority to spend yours. We do.
And so Tanner, from what I understand from the number you've presented here, $64,000 will enable you to, in good faith, move forward with this, this proposal of the, what you've got under consideration for a contract with the, with the investors. Is that correct? It will let you get to stage one, to the next, whatever your marker point is? And then, should it be, as you suggest, that you've got a million dollars worth of infrastructure to put in, at that time, you would then come back to council for an appropriation? Is that how that would look?
Correct. And that would be a part of the disposition and development agreement. So in that, that agreement, which is not negotiated yet, but that's, we're setting the stage, that, that's one of the very next areas of focus, is that document. That document will include a number of terms. Those are the obligations on either party, and I fully expect that you'll see some obligations on the authority where public improvements are concerned. Those improvements could be very expensive. A very real example would be the agreement between Woodland Hardware Packard 1650 LLC, which is the Woodland Hardware property, and the DDA. Woodland, well, Packard 1650 purchased that real estate and proceeded to build a multimillion dollar building, occupy it with their business, employ people, pay taxes, et cetera. But the deal was, and this is, this is just very basic, you know, in basic terms, the deal was that the DDA would install the public improvements. And the DDA spent almost a million dollars, $900 and some odd thousand dollars, installing Center Street and Saddle Club, some curb and gutter and sidewalks, some utility extensions, some drainage, and that facilitated the private improvements that resulted. Those could not have been built without the public infrastructure. Well, the rest of the property is going to be the same, the basic structure. There will have to be public and private improvements, and the whole purpose of a DDA in this, in this regard, in this situation, is to facilitate that development with the tools the DDA has that a municipality does not have.
What are you going to get for your $64,000?
Well, it's, that's yet to be negotiated. So whatever the developer says is, is best for them, what they propose is what we're going to look at. We're looking to the developer to tell us what their goals are, what their capabilities are, and what would be most valuable to them in terms of public assistance. We will then say, "Well, can we afford it? Can we do it? Is it reasonable? Is it in the public's best interest or not?" Well, among all those questions are the, can we afford it? And $64,000, as much as that seems like, is still a very limiting number.
So let me interject here and ask this. Have you gotten a bid for survey and plotting fees yet?
No. We've had the property surveyed in the past. I, I can go back and look at those numbers, but.
What are the, what would you say are the three to five things that you feel are a minimum necessary for being able to initiate a contract with this particular group if they might have interest?
Boy, that's a good question.
Well, I, see, I'm asking that question because $64,000 means absolutely nothing to me right now.
Right.
I totally understand the ability and necessity of being able to represent to any potential person you may engage with contractually, that you would need to have something available to you to be able to make that contract seem good. I still. I still want to have a firm, written, understanding of your ability to go into the discretionary, the reserve fund, excuse me. But, so that's, that's one issue here. But I'm, I'm totally at a loss other than knowing that a new survey may be necessary and some minimum requirements there. I'm at a loss. And, and I think it's pretty standard, the types of things would be there. We're obviously not going to budget a million dollars right now. So when we're talking about all the improvements that have to be done, and all those things that we would be obligated to, you know, we can try to get to that later. In fairness, let's take note of the fact that out of this whole negotiation anyway, is if we're gonna be obligated to that level, then city council is gonna have some very serious decisions to make. It could require us to bond out to try to get that much money to be able to do the improvement, which might make any contract at all very difficult for us to approve. So if we're talking about that much money, and, and I understand totally that it's there. So, so the, these future discussions of larger costs for this, to me, seems at this stage as we're working on this budget, uh, something of note, but not relevant to what we're trying to decide here when it comes to the DDA budget. So what I'd like to see, this is just personally what I'd like to see, is, you know, figuring out, there really are very minimal things to engage in a contract in most cases. If they're gonna ask you for something that's gonna cost a hundred, $200,000, then initially, then I, that's, that's a little bit of a weird contract to me in terms of a present obligation. So I'd be curious to know the three to five things that we're gonna at a minimum have to do. Plating and, and survey is obviously one of them. I can't imagine they wouldn't want an updated survey. There might be a couple other things. And I think before we were sitting here saying, okay, $64,000, well, let's, let's figure out what those things are, and then we'll figure out an amount around that and maybe slightly above it that gives you the flexibility you want. That's something we can consider. But, and we can, listen, if, if you get a firm contract with anyone, I think you've got a lot of willingness on this council to call a special meeting as soon as possible to consider approving what would be necessary to make sure that you can obligate yourselves to doing that. I think, you know, if we've gotta put in millions of dollars, I don't know whether or not there's any willingness in the council to consider a contract that will obligate us to that. But I'm sure any contract where they're doing most of the heavy lifting, I think we're probably gonna be willing to hit this off our backs. I think it's been a long time coming, and when I talk to council members, that's what I hear. So I guess what's more prudent and helpful for us is to know specifically what those costs are. I'm still not really clear, by the way, and another line item, what, what we need $14,000 for beautification for. I mean, I, I mean, I know conceptually why I do beautification, and it is a little bit of an eyesore, but I'm, I'm not sure how urgent that is right now when you're somewhat down the road in the process of negotiating a contract. It doesn't make the contract more likely to happen. It maintains the eyesore, but everyone's already used to that. And frankly, the eyesore's been improved with, with the railcar. So that, that seems to me something I'm, I'm trying to put my head around why we even need to do anything like that. But if you're talking about state Woodland Station improvements that can get us to a contract, then, you know, we can talk about that. I'd just like to see detail, what we're gonna need likely.
So, yeah, I agree. There's two, there's two big items here that were shoved off tentatively before this presentation, which is beautification and the Woodland Station improvements, which have now mushroomed from 30 to 64,000, based on, from what I'm able to understand is a good faith allocation that's, that's, that may be marginally irrelevant to the total cost. And if 30,000 is not enough good faith, 64,000 may not be either, you know, and that unlimited basis on it, and, and I agree, I'm not a developer, but I do have some awareness of Woodland Station. And, you know, why 60, 64? Maybe 67.5 was a better number. You know, unless we have some real basis for it, it's, it's hard for us to swallow.
Mayor?
Yep.
So I have a bit of a different take on it on two regards. Firstly, on the 64,000. Tanner, if this negotiation goes well, that's, if I'm hearing you correctly, that's what the DDA feels is what you need at this juncture to, to be able to enter into. You've, you've done the dance with these people for over a year, if I'm understanding correctly.
Yeah, and 64 is the most I could put in there without reducing the reserve. So that's the number. That, that's really how that was derived. If I made it 65, then that unrestricted cash reserve would decline from...
Okay, good. So, so, so you're making two points there to my mind. One is that at the end of the, of this fiscal year, if you haven't entered into, into a successful negotiation, you're not gonna have spent that $64,000, are you? Or maybe for some portion of it, but you're not gonna have expended it into... You have it as a budget item. From what the mayor says, it's like you've, you've picked a number. From what Jim says, there's like, give me five things you're gonna spend it on. But from my understanding of being on, the liaison of the board, it's too early for you to say those things without compromising your, where you are in negotiations. Would that be a fair comment?
Yes.
All right. So if that's the case, if this is budgeted in here, if the contract fizzles or whatever, you're not gonna, were you gonna go spend that on something else? You guys got a trip to Europe or something planned?
No.
So then where would that money go?
Well, to the reserve. Any money not spent will end up in the reserve. What we would be at the end of the year is under budget in expenditures, and the reserve would grow more than what's shown in the budget.
Well, from my observation of what you've presented to us for the last, since 2015, your track record as volunteers, you've been very frugal. So for me to look at that and think you're going extravagant, it just doesn't seem consistent. So my comment to you is, if that's what you feel you need in your pocket to go to negotiations, I, I don't have a problem with that. And if it's going back into the, the general reserve at the end, if there's some reason it doesn't pan out, I have zero problem with that, so.
If I could interrupt, let's, let's go back to the beautification and get a little history on that, and then I'm gonna take over and ask some questions of the council that's here in a consensus sort of manner. But if you, if you could address the 14,000 beautification, please.
Yes, sir. I do wanna mention that quite a number of questions were asked earlier. One of them, though, was about the city possibly bonding out. And I do wanna point out that that's not, that's not really a consideration for any of us at this point, because should any improvements go forward that require any bonding, that is the authority. The city has to issue the bonds on behalf of the authority, but the city has no municipal liability. The liability for those bonds are solely on the DDA. So I, I don't want you to be thinking in your minds that the city has some sort of financial risk here. That's not the case.
Well, if I might interject here, I mean, at the end of the day, we do, at some point, the DDA goes away. The DDA has obligations to us already. So I, I'm not sure that it's so cut and dry as what you said there, Tanner. I do agree that the bonding does ultimately go under the DDA authority, but at the, at the end of the day, we, we are ultimately responsible for anything there under various circumstances that are both burned in to the DDA charter. And, and then if, if in some future number of years, the city council decides to make adjustments on the purpose and use to the DDA. So, yeah, I mean, you're, you're right in a way, but it's a little bit more complicated than just that.
Oh, I completely agree with you. I completely agree with you. I just didn't want, where bonds are concerned, when that word came out and, you know, the words "we" or the city bonding for, you know, I just wanted that part to be clear. There's no, there's no financial risk on the city over those bonds, even if the DDA is faulted.
Well, we can, we can dicker about nomenclature. The DDA is chartered under the city. So, I mean, city, DDA, whatever, the obligations ultimately are. It may be delayed, it may be put to the side under the terms of the charter, but ultimately we're responsible. So I, I think we can dicker about that all day long. The point is that we have to, we have to approve the contract ultimately, and that contract has the potential of requiring debt, and that's something we still have to consider. But that's just, I mostly brought that up less to talk about that issue, but to try to focus us on what is the real Woodland Station's improvements number, that is absolutely necessary to, to negotiate in good faith. And I still want to understand with precision what we can do with the reserve. Because it seems to me that with the reserve there, you, even if you have to come to us to approve that spending, that reserve is there, and that could also be used as a way to obligate the DDA in the future. Because it is a reserve, it is cash, that is available, that's a, that's an important consideration as well, and it may be more important a consideration than, than actually having a budgeted item. So I'm still, I'm not sitting in a convinced state that we need to put anything in the Woodland Station improvements area. And if we do, in my mind, it needs to be something that facilitates the process of getting a contract and, and the only, the minimum necessary to get that done. And I don't, we have any idea what $64,000 means. So that's why I'm bringing this up.
Well, I struggle with that, Mayor. Sorry. I struggle with that because the, now that we have a cog car on there, now that we have a place that we can attract visitors to, the very, that component, irrespective of any contract, to me, irrespective of any contract of development, there is a potential while negotiating, everything's going on, to have, to draw people to that site. Is any of that beautification tagged for anything other than the negotiations?
Any of the beautification budget?
Yeah.
Okay. Right now, there is nothing specific for that budget, other than in the event, the things that have been discussed by the board for beautification are, in the event that there needs to be public assistance with pressure washing of the downtown, which we've seen repeatedly in the past, and should expect again, even though that may become a task burdened by the city, which would be wonderful, but that's not yet occurred. That's just an idea in the works. We're postured for it. We've done it in the past. We might do it again if needed. Any other beautification, such as flowers, DDA has participated with flower programs in the past and grants with businesses, 50% matching for businesses that wanna plant flowers in the summer. That's another beautification item. We've never spent more than, I wanna say, $5,000 on beautification ever. Why have we budgeted so much here? Well, Woodland Station Improvements is a capital outlay account. The money that's expended through that account should be translating to the book value of the property on our books. Certain types of investments in the property can be considered Woodland Station improvements. Other types of investments in the property aren't really investments, they're expenditures, such as mowing the grass. I don't know if you guys recall the fire a couple of years ago at Woodland Station. Been under pressure to mow the grass. We've had to do some maintenance this year. We've had drainage maintenance, okay? There was some erosion of the property, there were some drainage issues, we had to go back and make some drainage improvements. Things that are general maintenance of the property would not be considered Woodland Station improvements. And beautification is the only line item that we have that's really anywhere close to, you know, an accurate description of what that, those expenditures would be.
Well, in the prior DDA meeting, I recall Mary Jo talking about the idea of putting a platform at the cog car, so there could be tourism there, that there can be an active use of that property, turn it into something that, that is of value to the citizens. So I don't see any numbers in here that reflect that, and I thought she was talking $40,000 or something.
So that is something that at this stage in negotiation with the developers, we would be tying to the development plan. The developer's development plan takes precedence over any of the public improvements that we may contemplate, such as a pavilion around the cog car platform, any other landscape improvements. There is some desire to do that, to, to build a platform around the car. There's some work on interpretive signage and historical information that could be put in those interpretive signs around that area. However, if the developer says, here's our proposal, and included in our proposal is public property at the north part of the, the property where the cog car is, that should remain public, and we would like for the public to install certain improvements. We do not want it to be, they've actually said to us, we don't want it to be left as is. It will need to be cleaned up and enhanced. The park-like feel of Bergstrom Park to be expanded and some other improvements, whether they be fire pits, swings, chairs, whatever, whatever. They've proposed a number of ideas, and they like some of the ideas that the city's engineer has proposed. Those things will become the responsibility of the DDA. If we agree to them, and if the council agrees to them, then we'll need to be ready, willing, and able to improve the property that would be adjacent to their property.
So, so are you saying that, and you're going through these negotiations, that some of those requirements are in the mix of that negotiation that's present?
Uh, they, there are elements of the development plan that have been discussed.
That's, but what I'm asking is, are you already anticipating in negotiations an expectation on the developer's part for these kinds of expenditures? I mean, you've been talking to him for a year, so I figure you have a little bit of an understanding of that.
Yeah, if I understand your question, I would say most certainly. The developer's already expressed to us some vision for the property, including the private property and, well...
Well, I get that, but I'm asking in terms of negotiating and finalizing a contract, are you saying that they would want items like this completed before they would engage in a contract?
No, not necessarily, no.
Okay. So, see, from my perspective and for the mayor's purposes, right now, I'm a no on the beautification money. But I, I'm still open to Woodland Station improvements, but I, I'd like to see more detail of what that's going to be, because I, I, I'm not seeing, I see the, the necessity to be able to negotiate in good faith, but I still don't know for certain that the reserve can't be used as a means to get to that. Frankly, I'd prefer to work off the reserve so that we don't have to pull any more out of our budget to, I'd rather, you know, approve money from the reserve for these initial contract purposes rather than pulling more money out of our budget. But if there is some real necessity to have cash on hand in the Woodland Station improvements, then I, I'd like to see better specificity on what that might reasonably be at contract negotiations.
You'll have to forgive me, because you keep mentioning the reserve, and I cannot understand how that could possibly work. The reserve is not something you can authorize us to draw from in future expenditures with...
Oh, you can authorize, that's, that's part of my question, is how the reserve actually works, because I honestly haven't looked into that for the DDA. So your board can authorize use of the reserve?
No, no, only through the budget. If you, if you wanna authorize, as, as I think you just said, and I may misunderstand it, but if I heard you correctly, what you said is spend from the reserve as we go forward. Don't put the money into the budget.
No, that is not what I said. I said, for the purposes of contract negotiations and being able to make commitments in that contract that might have financial hook to... contract that might have, uh, financial, uh, hook to it, that, that money for the contract purposes come out of the reserve. I'm not talking about overall spending out of the reserve, I'm talking about for the purposes of the contract.
For purposes of the contract, we need money approved in the budget for expenditure, not money in the reserve.
So, how does, how do you get to the reserve? I'm starting to get more confused now. How do you get into the reserve ever?
We budget it. What I could have done...
Out of the DDA, the DDA board?
Yeah, no, 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 right here in this document. If we were going to do that, what I would have done is shown a bigger number right here or anywhere else. And this reserve would be spent down. We would budget to take reserve cash and plug it into the expenditures. We would come to council and say, here's our proposed budget. You would see what we're proposing and say yes or no.
Okay, so my question is, are you able to draw from the reserve on the fly?
No.
And why not? Who does that? You're saying that reserve can only be used by you if we budget it?
It can only be reserved...
I mean, because it wouldn't show up in that particular line item, because that line item is an expenditure from the city.
Who, I'm sorry, what is an expenditure from the city?
Is the Woodland Station improvements line from the city?
No.
Budget, or from your budget?
DDA.
So, the only way to go into the unrestricted cash reserve is through a budget line item in that area?
Or a supplemental appropriation after the fact.
So, so what I'm suggesting at this stage, unless I can see something more firm, and just given my opinion, I, the rest of the council may think differently, but, um, from my perspective, I'd rather, in, during contract negotiations, uh, have you be able to refer to the unrestricted cash reserve, which is very easy for us to appropriate, and I can see no reason why this council would not be willing to help with that. Um, in the specials, I think we'd call a special session gleefully, and, uh, we would meet precisely twenty-four hours after notice. I mean, you know, um, I, I think, it seems to me that you can obligate the unrestricted cash reserve in negotiations, and we can come in and do a supplemental. But if there's some specific things that you want to make sure that you have available to you to finalize these contract negotiations, and you'd like to put those into Woodland Station improvements, then I'd like to see what those are. I know, I know a contract can go anywhere. I get that. But if, if, but if it can go anywhere, that means hundreds of thousands rather than tens of thousands of dollars. I just want to know what, uh, the DDA believes are the minimum things that we need to have financial obligations to do so that we can, uh, go into a contract in good faith.
Uh, I agree with that, by the way.
Mr. Mayor, this is Council-elect Alfieri. May I have a few moments?
You bet.
Thank you. Um, first, I'd like to say, I, I would echo what Councilmember Zuluaga said. I keep in mind that this board does not appear to have been spending frivolously. Um, they've been very prudent with managing and eliminating certain expenses. Uh, the conversation seems to revolve around Woodland Station improvements as well as beautification. I hope that we can at least come to some sort of consensus that the rest of what, imagine air quotes, discretionary spending, we can simply agree to put that in the budget and move on and only focus on these two other topics.
That was the next thing I was going to do.
I read your mind. Um, in regards to the beautification, the fourteen thousand, uh, my only question with that would be, I've been around long enough to see DDA partner with, uh, the downtown businesses for the flowers that have lined our streets for many, many, many years. Uh, it's something that all of the residents expect to see, the businesses expect to see, and the tourists expect to see. Uh, the city, a number of years ago, eliminated that expense from the budget, and the DDA stepped up to provide it. Uh, my question there would be, if we are criticizing the DDA for that beautification budget, does the city expect to step in and cover those expenses instead? Uh, the other thing I would comment on is regarding the money spent on Woodland Station improvements. To some extent, I see the need and the value in DDA to be able to negotiate these contracts. Um, and ultimately, if that money is, is not expensed, expensed to Councilmember Paff's point, um, you know, why is it not coming out of the reserve? Well, if that line item was zeroed out, that sixty-four thousand would go to the reserve, and then they'd just be turning around and drawing on the reserve. Uh, so it just adds extra steps to the process. Uh, those are my thoughts. From now, I would like to suggest that we hopefully, Mayor Carr, as you stated, can get some sort of consensus on, you know, most of those line items, maybe with some more information on the Woodland Station improvements. Um, I would be inclined to let the DDA run with the beautification budget, given where that has gone in the past, and the fact that I haven't heard of any intentions by the city to step up and cover those expenses. Those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to take over now and, uh, fine tune this, uh, per Ms. Alfieri's, uh, suggestion, which I've been on pins and needles for almost an hour. Uh, I'm going to start from the bottom of some discretionary things, and then I want each of you, council that's in the audience here, to consider what I'm asking. I'm asking for us to at least start with reinstating the supplies, which is two hundred and fifty dollars, the training, travel, which is five hundred, the advertising legal notices, which is one fifty, and the information technology services, which is, I'm sorry, that's three fifty, advertising is one fifty, training is five hundred, and supplies. Can we get consensus for those four items to be put back in, and then I will go forward with other suggestions? Um, I vote yes. We, we have no business here, so we're just coming to a consensus. Uh, would, uh, when we, when we come to a public hearing, I would like to see those reinstated and give staff some direction with these. Uh, Mr. Zuluaga, would you agree with, with those four?
I'm fine with those four, and I'm actually fine with them all, so just make it easy for you.
Okay, but I'm just going to do four at a time.
That's fine.
Uh, Councilmember Paff.
Um, I'm taking note of my discussion in the last meeting that we just, where we discussed this issue. I'm fine with those items.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember-elect Alfieri, what's your feeling on those four items?
Yes, I'm perfectly okay with those as well. I would ask, did you mean to include professional services? We couldn't see it on the screen.
We're going there next. I want to get, I want to do this stepwise. You, people have been around me long enough to know that I do things in steps. I do the easy step first. So, the four, we have concurrence. Uh, Darren, I know he's in the other room taking notes, uh, putting the three fifty, the one fifty, the five hundred, and the two fifty back. Now, I will go to professional services, which is five thousand dollars. Uh, I understand the need for this, I understand the, uh, the explanation, it's much clearer than, uh, with these notations. I would suggest in the future, when you do budgets, that you do those notations for us. Uh, Darren and his staff have been excellent about adding these notations, it really helps us get through the budget. Uh, Mr. Zuluaga, are you okay with the five thousand?
I'm on board.
Miss, Mr. Paff?
Um, I, yeah, I, I think so. I'm, I'm, I'm not clear why we go up to five thousand, that may be the contract with the person, but, um, with some reservation, yes.
Understand. Councilmember Alfieri-elect?
Um, yes.
Uh, I, I vote yes with the same, uh, comment that Councilmember Paff has. So, we have four, um, consensus on the five thousand. So, we've reinstated, uh, professional services, information technology services, advertising legal notices, and training and travel, and the two fifty for supplies, the amounts that were presented previously. Now, we go to beautification. I'm going to, I'm going to suggest something here, because I, like Councilmember Paff, um, frankly, I think this whole thing minus some nominal amount will be picked up in the concept that we've talked about for the vendor fee contract. Um, so all the power washing, all the flowers, and all that kind of stuff, there still is mowing over there, there's still some other, other consequences. They spent five thousand this last year. Um, I would propose, uh, a number there, and I'm just pulling this out of the air, but we, uh, put a beautification number in there, it maximized at five thousand dollars. Um, we, we don't have any discussion on this, but I'm just going to see, see what we're, how we feel about this. Uh, Councilmember, uh, Paff, I'm going to start with you.
Already due to ours downtown, so, yep, I had...
I'm sorry.
I would, um, I would prefer, yeah, I do agree with mowing and stuff like that, I prefer a three thousand number, but I, um, I won't quibble with too much with...
Three thousand, three thousand going once, going twice. Uh, Mr. Zuluaga?
Well, there's a proviso in there, and that is the whole, uh, vendor, vendor fee location, so...
Yeah, I, I, we're, we're assuming that, uh, most of this, I, I think all of it minus the mowing and a few things on the lot level there.
I am just recalling a conversation with the city manager who told me that, uh, the reason that the city does not get engaged in power washing of the buildings is for liability issue. They're unwilling to take the liability of, um, being on the property of the business owners. So, they're okay to suck out the water that goes into the drain, but not on the thing. So, from that standpoint, I'm cautious about delegating that from that fund.
Oh, of course, we're thinking about having subcontractors anyway, aren't we? Yeah, they're going to do all that, and they're not power washing buildings or power washing streets.
Well, that's true. Okay. So, I'm all right with a five.
So, we have a three and a five. Uh, Councilmember Alfieri-elect, Councilmember-elect Alfieri.
Yes, I'm here. Um, I, sticking with the mindset of council so far during the budget process for a flat budget, um, I, I'm looking back at, at what was budgeted for this year at ten thousand, um, and think that that aligns with the overall mindset that council has followed thus far in the budget process at ten thousand, and leave it as it was budgeted in the current year.
All right. Well, I'm at, um, three or five, either one, so we have no consensus, so we'll move on. It'll stay at zero. Uh, now, let's talk about Woodland Station improvements. I, like Councilmember Paff, am concerned about just putting a big number in there and letting, uh, it's like when I go to the, buy a truck, and they say, how much money you got? I have eighty-five thousand dollars. That's right, that's what that bug costs, eighty-five thousand dollars. Um, and I realize I'm simplifying things, but I, I think we're at a point where, um, we need, we need some number that we may have consensus on. I'll, I'll entertain a brief discussion by each of you. Councilmember Zuluaga?
I think DDA has shown their frugality, they've shown their prudence over the last four years, uh, in terms of how they utilize their budget. I think if the DDA is, uh, is a, DDA is a quasi-governmental authority, who we have given specific, um, authority to go ahead and act on behalf of the city's interests in this specific area. And if their determination is that they need a budget to work with, to have the, um, money in their budget to negotiate, then I respect that, and I would defer to the number that they're proposing.
Which is sixty-four thousand? Councilmember Paff?
Um, I agree that, in, in the most positive terms, that, uh, DDA has been prudent with their budget, uh, but I believe it's an imprudence not to have a specific plan or some reasonable plan for this number. I'm a zero until I hear something a little bit different that, that gives some specificity.
Councilmember-elect Alfieri?
I would echo the acceptance of Councilmember Zuluaga. Um, I would hate to look back at the DDA having, having gotten so far with the current development that has the potential, uh, to be seen through, and look back and consider whether or not council's focus on these five digits, um, within a budget that they've been very responsible with, uh, ends up being the make or break point because their hands are tied in negotiations with the developer. Um, there is no concern for me that the funds that they receive have not been spent anything less than absolutely responsibly. Um, I agree with what Councilmember Zuluaga said, they have been endowed with certain authorities by the council, uh, to take these things on because the council cannot. Um, I think sixty-four thousand dollars is a relatively conservative number when it comes to looking at all the things that they might be asked to contract with for the developer and the development. Um, and again, I would hate to look back knowing that this one line item ended up in hindsight being the make or break for a development at Woodland Station, uh, after so much time.
Thank you. Um, I'm looking at two thousand eighteen, actual at seventy-five hundred, two thousand nineteen at thirteen-three, uh, budgeted twenty-twenty at ten thousand, and now suddenly we're at sixty-four thousand, when all of those years, there were contracts that were being looked at. And, um, so I'm, I'm confused as to, uh, the purposes also. I'm, I'm going to defer this, because we don't have any consensus anyway, to having more solid input. I mean, I, I would entertain, uh, certainly the, the twenty-twenty adopted budget number, which seemed to be good for people that they're talking to the last three years, and, um, but we, we don't have that number in front of us. So, uh, I guess I would ask that we get more specificity, uh, to back it up, per Councilmember Paff's, um, comments. With that, I appreciate your time, thank you for your presentation, we've been at this almost an hour and a half, and I think we're going to move on. So, we have concurrence on five things, and two things not, that were removed.
I do have a question for you on the concurrence about the beautification. As I watched, it was three or five, not more than five. Was your proposal, there was an affirmative, an affirmative, and a ten. Does that not put the consensus at not more than five?
Me, four...
Then I heard, well, that makes zero. But we had four in favor of three to five.
It stays the same, that it's in there right now, which is presented today at zero.
Okay. Got it. Thank you. Um, and to your point about the past few years, there were no proposals submitted in the past few years, we were actually in lawsuits then.
What about Todd House?
That, that came at the same time, in fact, just after, the proposal that was brought forward by the current developer. We did not have proposals on the boards in these years past, so that's why there was no budget for any of this. So, anyway, I just wanted that to be clear to you guys.
Well, I understand that beautification, uh, the majority of that, uh, in the current plan, which is not also certainly unapproved, but, uh, the current plan that we've had some consensus on, for the vendor fee, uh, contract, uh, would include quite a bit of that, but not all of it. So, I think there's a case to be made for a low number there, but we didn't seem to come to any agreement on a low number. If anybody would like to, uh, Mr. Paff, I, I can't remember what you said, but I remember we had three different types of situation. Do you want to make any kind of proposal there, or move on?
No, we can move on.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next up, we're going to talk about the budget. Councilmember Alfieri has, elect, has, um, just gotten to, uh, look at these things, and, so we're going to, uh, work through some things. Uh, I don't intend to go page by page, but if, um, if we can bring up some things that might be issues that, uh, Mr. Paff, Mr. Zuluaga, and/or myself have, I would entertain some of that at this point. at this point. I know we've talked about different things, including, I'll, I'll start out with the vendor fee situation. I've had conversations and understandings that I would like to see the vendor fee expenditures listed in the budget document as categories, XX dash XS dash, let's say 9,900, instead of specific itemization, have them categories and break them up. I would like to see them accounted for in the accounting program because they can easily, that can easily be done. On pages 15, 22, and 41 would be those places to list expenditures. And of course, two of those areas are pages that have to do with parks and rec and streets and trying to find it here. Something else. I can't get to it here.
Did you say 15 was your first page?
Page 15, yeah.
That's the actual page number, not the?
It's the actual page number on the bottom, not the PDF number.
On the bottom of the, yeah, right, on the PDF.
On the PDF, it's 34.
Page 34 on the PDF?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Emily. On the PDF, there is a number 15. It's not the page number 15 at the bottom of?
No, it is. It's the page number 15 at the bottom.
Numbers were on the, on the version that I had a few days ago. So the, the concept being that I'd like to see the vendor fee expenditures accounted for. Granted, we're gonna have a contract. In other words, each of these locations would have a dedicated GL number of whatever, like I said, XXX dash XXX dash 9,900 or some number that's available. And parts of the contract amounts and residuals would reside in those. So that's just one issue that I would like to see. The, we talked about the DDA. We have talked about Main Street. We have a new member on, on the council, but I'm not sure if Mr. Pfaff wants to talk about this or?
If I can there, if I, because I just wanna kinda review what we've talked about already about this particular item. We've talked about creating a subsidiary ledger for this. Am I correct in, in outlining all of the expenditures in, in projects in a subsidiary ledger?
Yeah, I find that unacceptable. There's perfectly capable to do expenditures within the current accounting system, and I would like to see it done that way on expenditures.
So if I, if I can jump in, what we've discussed, the mayor and I, is putting a new line item under, you know, Parks Building and Grounds, for example, and then listing the projects under that.
How does that work if it goes to a contract?
Well, then you would have, whatever amount is going to the contract would be under a different line item. I don't know where, if it'd be under Parks Building and Grounds or under intergovernmental. You may have our visitor services contract, for example, under interdepartmental. So you could put the contract under there, and then whatever remainder under a line item, for example, like I said, Parks Buildings and Grounds, and then have the projects listed under that.
Functionally, the two places that most of these things are done are under Streets, which is page 22 that I mentioned, and 15, which is Parks Building is in Grounds. Page 41, of course, is, is the 410 fund. But all those expenditures can be easily bundled in those two spots, if not additional. But it's basically a bundling situation. The contract can be divided up in any fashion that can be amongst those two, three things. But they certainly can be accounted for when we bring in expenditures, just like we bring in expenditures on any other thing. And I understand there's some, some, some studying going on to get those numbers related to that. We don't have page 105, which was gonna talk about that. But this would be a 2021 accounting situation more than anything. But I, I think it's pretty easily, we can, we know how much the revenue is. We've folded it into the sales tax revenues in two places. So we have a general fund revenue. I would like to see a corresponding expenditure, and you can put it one place, three places, whatever, but that, that number should be on a payout expenditure allocation on the, on the, on the accounting also, in both, in both the general fund and the 410 fund.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Councilmember elect. I apologize that I keep interrupting, but I don't have a raise hand feature, I think, because I'm a participant. So I just kinda have to jump in there, if you'll forgive me. On that same note, in breaking the expenditures out into line items, we did have the separate sales tax vendor fee had its own separate line item, and now it is part of the sales tax revenue line item. I, I don't necessarily understand the thinking behind that. I would like to see it still remain separate, especially if the expenditures that are being covered by that revenue is being broken down separately in the budget as well.
Basically, it's a subcategory. I argued for the subcategory and did not win out on that, but I understand what you're saying.
So there is no subcategory. It's just wrapped into the sales tax overall, so we have no way of knowing the difference between the sales tax, the actual sales tax that's being collected versus the sales tax vendor fee that's being retained?
Yeah, we just know what it is.
We know the percentage, so the?
Right, the percentage is 3.3%.
Right.
So what is the, forgive me, catching up here. What is the justification behind breaking out the expenditures but eliminating the line item for that revenue that's covering those expenditures?
There's a question.
It seems to me all that should be accounted for so that we can track it. And based on the ordinance, that would be useful. I would like to see suggestions from the, from city staff on how to put that together under the direction of the mayor, who's already begun looking into it. But it, it should be noted because it's an ordinance requirement anyway. Or it's an ordinance requirement to provide these funds for these purposes based upon giving back the vendor fee in previous years.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that. I'd, I'd say it's pretty straightforward that we wanna see those numbers so that it's easy to see that we've actually fulfilled the ordinance and where it's been allocated throughout the course of the budget.
Not, not that I disagree with the mayor, just the subsidiary ledger helps the staff manage the projects. You take 3.3% of the revenues, you put it in there, you have a clear, that, that defined understanding of where all that, those revenues go on one sheet. And I guess it might be confusing or awkward too for us to manage its, manage the expenditures if they're at three different places in, in the overall budget. So it's kind of the thought process. If, if the 3.3% from the sales tax, the general fund sales tax is one place, and you have the 3.3% from the 410, and you're able to identify in one place, which would be appendix, I think it's a, whatever page 105, you could easily go to that and see where all the projects and the total amount of those are in that subsidiary ledger. That was the intent. It, it seems to me that we can account for it the same way we account for 410 funds, though. Does that seem unreasonable?
Yeah, with my accounting hat on, I, I, if you wanna, it, it can be easily put in the accounting system. And to not do that is, if you wanna do some spreadsheets on the side, that's fine. But I, I would like to see this accounting in the accounting system, which is a transparency issue for me inside the budget.
And, and it's a good way, it's a good way for transparency to show that we're finally complying with the ordinance. And I don't think it has to be broken out into every little type of expenditure that's going in there. I just think that fund needs to be accounted for and shown for what it is. These are public records, and people will be able to trace that and see what we're doing. It's not hidden. And then it'll be, it's a subsidiary ledger, much like the, like you see with the lodging tax, where you have the list of items in the lodging tax. So it's, it, it would be clear to the community where the funds are being spent. It's transparent. So I think maybe we're just, maybe it's an opportunity for us to sit down and kinda give some examples, so we bring an example, so they see if you feel comfortable with it. But it, it demonstrates where all those funds would be going on one single document, and it's possible.
I'd be happy to sit.
May I jump in?
Yep.
Since we talked about it, it's just simply, and for a couple of things, I wanna go back. The reason that we put it into, back into that sales tax line items in both the general fund and the, and the Streets Fund, 410 Fund is because it's 100%, we don't collect, it's not a separate, you know, collection from each business. It's, it's 100% of the tax. But I, I personally go in and separate it out in the spreadsheet each month. So it's a, it's a manual thing that I do. And so I think that was the reasoning behind originally just putting it back into those line items for sales taxes because it's accurate. It's showing, you know, the full amount that's being collected, whereas I have to manually actually take out the 3.3% each month for each of those and do a general entry. So the reason, and then what the mayor and I talked about is that there could be a, a new account number created. Well, right, whether that's in a couple different places and a couple different departments, including the contract. But then it is easily accounted for that way.
Well, I, I, I know that the, the percent of sales tax we send over to the school board is accounted for as a line item. I would argue that the ordinance is, was put together in such a way that it actually is a separate collection. Now, under normal circumstances, if there had been no vendor fee beforehand, you're right, Emily, I, I understand that. But the ordinance is specifically addresses a use for the vendor fee refund, which was a specific negative tax, obviously, that once existed in the city. For all these years after that ordinance was adopted, that money is still circumscribed as the vendor fee for some other purpose. So I think it would be very simple to put a line item in there. And to me, as I got up to speed on that some time ago, it seemed a little strange that we didn't account for it separately. Because it, it is, in effect, very much like these other broken out parts of the sales tax that we collect.
So I would suggest that there's at least two places, as I stated, which is Culture, I mean Parks, Parks Building, Grounds, and Streets in the general fund. We divide up, we, we figure out what the 3.3% is. We divide it up between those two funds as a starting point, and that, that tracks it. And, and as we, as we, we at least have a place we can, we can charge against in the, in the accounting system. And likewise with this, with the 410 fund. Of course, that's easier because it's just one place. And we talked about the 410 fund being a reserve. We, we've already talked about that. We can talk about that more. But that may be a, a place we can continue to pull that reserve up. But that's a separate issue.
And I might add to just address the transparency issue. We have a burnt-in transparency based upon our core laws. But, so anyone can find out specifically where things are going at any time and should have easy access to that. But when we're putting it on these published budgets, I think it helps clarify things. Some people might be confused about how we might state it, but that also enhances transparency because it enhances curiosity.
So lacking any other direction, I would say, figure out what that 3.3 was that we merged and then split it between to an initial pass on Parks Building and Grounds and Streets with a new category. I just, I said 9,900, but it could be whatever's convenient for you, Emily, to do that. That, that's my suggestion.
So if I can clarify that, we're not trying to split out a contract at three different line items. That would be very difficult. We're, we're talking about placing, if the costs that were associated with a specific department, they'd be identified in a, in a line item on that. But when we go to a contract, it would be, it would be broken out as a separate contract, and that would be?
Yeah.
A line item.
And then it would be expenditure divided, however, between the two places or three.
You're saying break a contract up into two different departments?
No, no, no. We have one contract, but when we, when we bill and we do payables, we, we figure out that, oh, 40% goes to Parks Building and Grounds, and 60% goes to, of this check goes to Streets, you know, for instance. Just wild numbers that are picked out of thin air.
Cost allocation.
One contract, one contract.
One contract, cost allocation to the different departments that it would go against. Okay. Thank you.
I'm gonna, I, I don't hear from anybody else yet, but I'm gonna talk about one more thing that I have on my list here annually. I know we're not quite at that point, but I think it's useful for staff to be on notice, as they always are. Every year, I talk about reducing the mill levy. And I would like to propose reducing the mill levy slightly, but take it out of the unrestricted fund balance reserve so we don't have to mess with the whole rest of the budget. And my proposal would be to reduce the mill levy to 15.75. I know it's not on our business ledger today, but I'd like to put that out there for consideration by council. And usually I just knock off the digits, but I'm gonna try to knock it down to 15.75. And the reason is because we've got a 27% reserve projected, and I think one mill's about 125K, and we're talking about half of that, so about 60K, which will not decrease our unrestricted fund balance much at all. That's, that's one thing I wanted to put on the table tonight and see if we have a little discussion. If, Councilmember Zuluaga, if you wanna pitch in.
I'm all for revising the mill levy. And I think, given the, the flat budget that we have and the, it's a modest, it's a modest look at the mill levy at this point. I'm, I like your idea. I'll go with that.
Councilmember Pfaff?
I'm supportive of it. I think we're in a position to be able to do it. And there've been a lot of ta, tax pressure over in the last decade or so. And I think it's, I think we're finally at a place where we can think through that. And so, yeah, I'd be open to that very much. I think it's modest enough, too, that we're not, that we can come back later and see what it looks like.
I apologize, Mayor.
Yeah.
I, I have to jump in on this because if, the reduction in the mill levy will come out of our revenues. And so if we, we can't take it out, any of that reduction out of our fund balance.
Well, the, the lower revenue will, will affect the fund balance, correct?
It will affect our expenditures. And right now, if you look at the general fund, we have $6,377 only left over.
That would increase the, the budget cuts by 62,000. So we'd have to cut 62,000 out of the budget.
Right. So unfortunately, yeah, if it could come out of, we, we can't spend the fund balance. So we have to have a balanced budget so that when you look at your revenue, the revenue. So we have to have a balanced budget so that when you look at your revenue, the revenues that are coming in, for example, for the general fund, we have $11,721,630. So we can't, in a budget year, exceed that, because then we don't have a balanced budget. So if any amount that we're taking from that, we can't take it from the fund balance, we can't take it from other line items. So if we cut the mill levy, that means we reduce our amount of property tax that we're taking in, which then impacts that revenue line item.
Well, I'd recommend we proceed and make it work. I'm sure we can.
That'll, that'll, the city staff will have to go back and cut 62,000 out of the budget. So if that's the council's decision, that will require us to go back and do, because that's exactly what that means, 62,000, because we're at a flat budget right now.
Right. And so that would mean, I mean, I don't know, we just told, for example, all of our staff, because they aren't getting any kind of COLA, that we are going to, we would absorb the healthcare increase. So we wouldn't be able to do that anymore, and we're just starting open enrollment. So I don't know how, where.
Where are you absorbing it from?
Sorry?
Where are you absorbing it from?
We have a flat budget, so we cut a lot of our, you know, travel and training. You'll see a lot of those expenditures are a lot lower, memberships. We went without, you know, renewing memberships in certain professional organizations for certain departments. I mean, we cut wherever we could. We're, we are bare bones right now as far, you know, and again, no COLA. So that means any kind of increase in cost of living, it doesn't get, you know, they don't, our employees don't get any help with that. They just have to absorb it into their budget.
Emily, but you also want to chat out, the, the last thing that we fill, we backfilled was the victim, victim's advocate grant that, that was funded this year for the police department. So this would go back, we, we likely would have to eliminate, you know, a public safety requirement as a requirement.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna call board on that. I mean, I'm tired of hearing budget discussions where people connected to government are always talking about how it's gotta get cut by public safety. I'm just, I'm calling straight.
But, no. Hey, you know. So, and we just got a, before this latest budget was put out, we did, we got a letter notifying that the state reduced that grant fund. So in order to keep that position whole and keep the victim advocate in that position, the general fund backfilled that remaining amount. So if you look to, I'm trying to find the, the page in the budget message, because it mentions that this changed and that we, that we did have to go back and, and backfill that. So that's what he's, that's what Darren was referring to.
Are you talking about?
That, that's one area of backfilling and adjustment in the budget that has, what, 1,000 line items? I mean, come on. Talking, bringing up public safety when the profession was happening is entirely unhelpful. And it's done regularly all over this country, and I'm not going to count in this. And yes, I stand, this statement was stupid. I believe it was designed for effect, and I think it was inappropriate for the city manager to bring up public safety as the initial counter to all this, because it's not the only issue in the budget. So we take the advice of the whole balanced budget requirement. We have a balanced budget requirement under state law, and I get that. But don't bring up public safety as the issue here, because it's not the issue. We can entirely take care of public safety if we decided to do something like this, and it would not be a problem. There are other places in the budget, if we decided to do this, to meet the state requirement. And I think it's inappropriate for public officials to constantly bring up public safety as the cut. That is a political statement, that is not a practical statement based upon all the line items we have to deal with around here.
So, Mr. Paff, let me just say, I mean, I just want to say that Emily covered the reason why I said that the very last backfill that we had was, was an issue of public safety. We had to find, we had, that's where we got to where we are at today with a flat budget. Otherwise, we would have had another, how much, Emily, 45,000 to work with?
We, we are, we are backfilling that by almost 34,000.
$34,000. So now, you're right. Now, now if we do not, if it's not taken out of public safety, we don't, if we don't go back to where we were before, yes, we will have to go look at Public Works or some other department and find $62,000 in budget cuts.
Darren, you keep asking it, Darren, and it's not acceptable. That is not our first, that is not our first place to do anything. And I'm gonna tell you this, I'm saying this as a report to you. The public is tired of hearing that public safety is going to be harmed if any legislative body decides to make cuts. That is an inappropriate way to approach this. It's a political way to approach this. It is one consideration when you look at the entire budget, but when that's your first step of the day. It's absurd and unnecessary.
How much, how much less have we spent this year than we did last year?
Let me.
$49,000?
I'm sorry, I, what, um, hey, Dick, hold on, I'm, hold on. I want to make this clear. Stop talking about public safety cuts. We did, we did, we all.
But, but that's it numbers, because this is coming out of the unassigned fund balance. If you check the page two on the budget, not PDF page two, but the actual page of the budget at the bottom, you see $924,079 that is excess that is going to the unrestricted, unreserved fund balance this year to get us to the 27% reserve.
Most of that comes from our, what we're not spending in 2019.
Excuse me, Ms. Kat Simpelis. What you're doing is decreasing that number by the half a mils, which is roughly $62,000. And then that will adjust that 27% reserve down to approximately 25, which is what the council requested to begin with at the beginning of budget session.
Okay, but can I explain again? We can't take the money from our fund balance. So most of that fund balance, that $924,000 that you see, is coming from what we haven't spent in 2019, or sorry, excuse me, 2020, what we won't spend. So all of that savings essentially is going into that fund balance. And also, fund balance is something that goes year over, year to year. It's like your bank account that you can think of. So it doesn't, what we start with in, at the end of 2019, that audited amount, that's from all the prior years combined up to the end of 2019, right? So then you, that's your starting point for your fund balance. But as far as, if the mill levy is cut, that will reduce our revenues. And so we would have to cut the equivalent amount, which is over 60, $62,000.
So Emily, can I ask you a question?
And that I, that $900,000, it's the excess after those expenditures.
No, that's not.
No, it's not the way that it works. And I can, I would happily go through it, because it is, it is a lot, because we have, obviously, we have, we have debt requirements, we have Tabor requirements, capital debt service. Right now, we have 600,000 that we would be putting into that by the end of 2021. So.
It is, it is a fair statement. It is a fair statement that Tabor requirements do require us to balance the budget in a certain way. And so, but we would just have to, if we wanted to do this, we just have to figure out a way to do it within the budget.
Well, Emily, I have a question for you on that regard. How much are you allocating for the city manager position for 2021?
Are you asking about salary? Because our, the total salary and benefits as budget is, is 182,708.
So we have an exiting city manager. We have a process that council will work through over a six-month period of, of replacing the city manager. So to me, that looks like that's pretty close to $62,000.
No, no, well, let me just say, think about it long-term, though, Robert, because $62,000 over the next five years, which is what this would come from, is $310,000, right? It's not, it's not a one-time thing. This is, this is permanently eliminating this 62,000, which would be 8, 70,000 next year, probably 75,000 the following year, that we go to debt service. This does not go to debt service now. This is $62,000 into perpetuity, right? So for the, I mean, it's 600, that you're taking 600 or 700,000 out of the budget over the next 10 years. That's what you're doing.
Well, I would, Mr. Mayor, if I can just make one final comment before I pass this back, is this is one suggested issue here tonight, and I think that there's a lot of other issues that I would like to put on the table, that it's going to change some of where all these figures are anyway. So just wanted to reiterate, I am in principle in supportive of the idea, and we can find it if we, if we are committed to that idea.
Yeah, let me, let me take the mic back, if you will. This was a suggestion of mine, and certainly within the parameters that we've been given. I had another suggestion, which was to maximize the visitor center contract at 20,000. There's 24,000 right there. We may look at other places. I don't know if we've got other places that are discretionary like that. I am, I am always very objectionable to the first place we go is public safety and public health nationally. And so we will, we will work from the bottom up. Our priorities, our priority tree was, all those things were at the top, and we start from the bottom, which is some of the things in the cultural and recreation department. But we, we have other areas that we could look at, too. That's one suggestion I have, which is to cap the visitor center contract at 20,000 or less. There's, there's a big chunk of money. We might look at other, other things. I don't know if anybody else has other areas. I know we've talked about.
I've got one.
Okay.
I think we can reduce Main Street funding to 5,000. Two reasons. One, we know that there is a fund balance out there right now of approximately 25,000 that is available to them somewhat. Two, because Main Street is unwilling to provide full accounting for where they've been this year, as we've asked in various, at various times here in the last few weeks, since the last discussion about that, I, I wouldn't be willing to consider anything anyway. Frankly, I'd do zero, but there was some, some taste on council to provide them some funding. I think we all agree that the general purpose of the organization is, is good in terms of what their net effect is, albeit small, but a good positive net effect in their area of responsibility geographically. But I feel that with 5,000, they're gonna have plenty of money moving forward this next year, and then we can revisit the issue at the next budget cycle. So there's 10,000 right there.
Well, so I do know that myself, I was at 5,000. I do know that council member Zuluaga was at 5,000. You're saying that you, you're interested at 5,000. I don't know what council member-elect Alfieri has in thoughts on that. I know it's a sensitive issue, but there's three people that at one point in, in the last month or today are looking at 5,000. Council member-elect Alfieri, 5,000 sound fair to you or, or more, more or less?
I can agree with that for all the reasons stated by Mayor Carr and council member Zuluaga and council member Paff.
Well, so there's, there's another potential consensus when we come to a public hearing. I think what we ought to do is look for places, and the staff's pretty smart about these things. They know where there's, we've taken $102,000 in training from last year, and it's down to about 78 for the same categories. And so they've done a good job bringing that down. Certainly, there's some minimal amounts of training that are needed, but they, they've looked at various places to bring back. We've just found $10,000, and if anybody cares to pitch in on my suggestion to cap the visitor center contract at 20K, there's another 20-plus. We're halfway there.
Well, if you want to take that as the next subject, I wouldn't see it as a place to reduce it, because I'm not for us funding the visitor center at this point at all. We don't have a clearly defined RFP. There's a question of even if, that comes to fruition in whatever direction, that I'm just not yet convinced that the return on the, on the dollar of the city dollars is going right there. I'd kind of like to see that go through a little more discussion before council, before allocating any money there, personally. I don't know how others feel about it, but I would suggest, though, that we could certainly find funds from moving our code enforcement position back to half-time. I'm hearing just way too many complaints in the community. It's, we've moved that to full-time, we've had an experimental time to see how this works, and it seems to me to be an overreach of the government.
So I don't know, Emily, can you tell me what sort of numbers that would look like in the budget for that position? If that was moved back to half, what sort of dollar amount are you looking there?
I would have to go through and figure out their benefits, and, yeah, I'd have to get back to you on that, because I don't have those numbers in front of me. Right now, you know, in the budget, the planning department is for four FTEs total.
The, like I say, I'm interested in reducing the mill rate down to 15.75. I think if we can work together with staff to assist them in, in areas. in, in areas that are easier than trying to spread it out over the whole budget, uh, we should, we should try to do that.
Mr. Mayor, you make a good point. We're about halfway there anyway. Uh, we will have an interim period without um, a city manager as we look for a new one. Uh, so, that actually will provide us an ability to uh, to do all this in the right way. There are plenty of areas that we can work on this and keep the public safe all at the same time.
I would suggest uh, for direction for staff, that we um, uh, take this under serious consideration. We, we do have concurrence on, from four people for mill rate reduction. Let's see, let's see how close to fifteen point seven-five we can get. I'd be happy to pitch in and help with this. We've, we've already talked about some things. There are, there will be a, I don't know if six months is going to be the lapse there, but uh, we, we do have some room there. Uh, but we certainly don't want to hamstring ourselves for future. Uh, on the other hand, maybe there's some discretionary things we can look at.
Mayor, if I can, I, I want to be clear that this is not, a mill levy reduction is not a one-year thing. A six-month, a reduction in the salary of the city manager only fixes a, a small portion of this. I mean, you're, this is a, a permanent reduction, or sixty-two thousand dollars out of the budget into perpetuity. So, it's, it's not, it's, it's a structural budget issue. It's not a, an operational issue. So, you're causing a structural, I mean, not causing, but you're, you're requesting a reduction that would force a structural change in the budget long-term. So, I don't, I don't think talking about a, a temporary vacancy replacement, it fixes it temporarily, but it still has, you know, it goes into perpetuity. We're talking decades of impact to that. So, um, it, it's going to require permanent cuts into perpetuity, and we've got to figure out where that would come from. So, if, 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 um, Zuluaga, Mr. uh, Councilmember Zuluaga is saying, let's not fund the visitor center right now. If we want to fund it later, you have, you're going to have to make further cuts, because you will have eliminated, that's only a temporary cut. If you're saying we're never going to fund the visitor center again, then maybe you're right. That is a permanent thing, if that's what you're saying. No more visitor center ever, then, then you've come up with forty thousand of that sixty-two thousand dollars into perpetuity. If you expect to fund it in the future, then you need to think about that, because the mill levy won't be there to fill, to pay for it. You're going to have to cut additional portions of the budget and services to achieve that. So, just think about that in terms of the long-term impact.
Well, Darren, I, I appreciate your, your perspective on that, but um, we are looking at this for this budget to um, find ways that your staff can work easily to integrate that for this budget. And we're fully cognizant that next year, we're looking at a different budget. And we are looking at, at the long-range plan for the benefit of our community. So, that's all factored in, at least in my mind it is. Uh, we're looking at a way here, at least in this discussion, of just uh, simple uh, um, possibilities for you to look at for this budget.
So, I might state, since it was addressed, um, regarding the temporary reductions which I brought up in terms of doing this, that was for the purpose and benefit of helping us account for the, the, uh, this year's requirement of providing a balanced budget. As situations change over the next few years, when we are likely to have economic growth, we will see revenues uh, coming back up in all likelihood. If not, we'll just make the best decisions we can. The city manager, I'm sure remembers as he was making that statement, that I have worked with state budgets in this state over some time period, uh, with Tabor requirements out in front of us, and um, fully well-aware of what the long-term implication is. So, it's um, you know, it's, it is a prudent and helpful thing to get our entire economy back in line in this community, and doing things like this and thinking through future budgets is all part of that. And to be candid, I still look at the budget the way it is right now, and I know that city employees won't be harmed, public safety won't be harmed. Um, there are plenty of ways to do this. Uh, the council sets the priorities, and then the city will be able to manage it. And we will always keep in mind public safety and making sure that we're not depressing our employees in any way. But um, I think we're, I think we're right in line in making this consideration. If we don't like it as we move forward in the next few weeks, then we can make adjustments. But I think it's a good proposal, and I think we can, unless, and, and I leave it to the mayor to decide if we can move on to the next topic of discussion.
Yeah.
Mr. Pat, if I can, I think one thing you want to bring up, Mr. Pat, is what is the legislative fix that's coming for the Gallagher amendment? Um, it, it, you don't know, right? And so, I think the, the move of reducing the mill levy could actually be exacerbated by the potential legislative fix that is coming next year. And I think you would agree that we don't know what that is yet. Um, and, and so, depending on a residential-commercial ratio, depending on which direction that, that legislative fix, this sixty-two thousand could turn into a hundred and twenty thousand. And so, what, what's your thoughts about that? Um, my thought about that is that it's going to be, have some effect on the business property tax revenue, for sure. But I already know that the legislature is beginning to work towards uh, uh, greater spending, even on their own part, even with um, the, the current changes in Gallagher. So, you know, they, they will uh, find some thing that they want to do that's going to make uh, that work for them. We can always find something to make it work for us. Even a hundred and twenty thousand is absorbable on this present budget without affecting public safety and without affecting employees. And we're going to have to be looking all down, I mean, because you talk about this long-term situation. What I'm looking at is what are we going to do as a city long-term? What are our priorities moving forward? We've had whacked-out priorities in previous decade or two, and now we've got to figure out what the new priorities are and how we do that well. Those are also considerations that come into a budget situation, regardless of revenues. But I, I'm going to tell you this, even with a Gallagher fix, you're still going to see property, uh, you're still going to see property tax revenue going up, because you are going to see property values go up over time in this state. And the overall economic stability is going to get better now that we have two highly viable vaccines available and on the market within a few months. And the things that have been hampering this present economy in this year will change entirely in future years. And then, uh, and so, those long-term effects are also going to accrue to our benefit, whereas any specific mill levy rate cut like this will accrue to the negative in terms of, uh, overall, in the terms of, of, um, of the budget itself. So, we're going to see changes that are going to work in our favor in the long run. We can't make decisions based upon fear. We can also make decisions based upon reality. And the reality is, unless the Biden administration does something to harm us, the economy's coming right back after this. You're going to have divided government in DC. That's not going to cause a, a deep amount of harm um, in the long run to the economy, because we're in stasis. Economies grow under divided government in Washington DC, and we're going to be out of the COVID crisis, which has depressed greatly what we're looking at in this budget right now. That changes next year with a vaccine, period. So, you know, those are the other considerations that come into play as well.
Also, it's the fact that this is Council-elect Alfieri. We continue to see an increase in sales taxes, uh, that we can expect to continue to go up. That's Councilmember Path.
Steph, uh, Stephanie, Stephanie, can you speak into your microphone? We cannot hear you.
Thank you, Robert. Uh, I was just commenting, is that better?
Much better.
I was just commenting on the fact we continue to see increased sales tax revenue as well, which Councilmember Path touched on. Uh, not mentioning the fact that, I know the default is to uh, put this out as an idea, that once it's lowered, it can never be changed. That is not the fact. Um, if there comes a time where the mill levy needs to be increased again, which, keep in mind, it has been the same for over twenty years, despite the increase in revenue, it has never been dropped, even though more money is going to the city than ever has. If there becomes a time where the mill levy needs to be increased again, the voters get the say to do that. It is possible. It is an option. But for now, we have the consensus with those of us that are in attendance, that this is absolutely feasible. And if it needs to be adjusted in the future, that decision is with the voters where it belongs.
Stephanie, if I can, I just want to correct you there, because what happened, you said that it's never gone down. It actually has in the last ten years. So, it actually went down twice. So, it hasn't continually gone, gone up. In fact, I, I think I demonstrated that last year, that the overall increase over the last ten years was, was rather minimal. Um, but I do want to make sure that, I want to get clear guidance from council, where are we going to get the sixty-two thousand dollars from? I, I understand you've said the visitor center, you've said the Main Street. I want to hear, I want to understand your priorities on where we would cut to get the sixty-two thousand dollars, because. I believe the mayor said that he would be discussing that with you. So, I, I just think we can. On the voice, well, this is the time to speak about your priorities. No, it's not, Darren. So, I think we had discussed as council to potentially move on to the next topic.
I would like to clarify, the rent mutes have decreased.
Can't hear you, Steph. Emily, we can't, Emily, I'm stepping in, we can't hear you.
Sorry. I would like to clarify, the revenues may have decreased, but the mill levy has not been decreased.
Correct.
Thank you.
Let's uh, let's uh, uh, work on this. Uh, we're not making any decisions tonight anyway. Uh, this, uh, we've got some consensus to examine this. We've got a consensus at a certain mill rate. Let's see how doable it is, and uh, work on this over the next week or two. Um, I, uh, I'm happy to entertain other things. I will start with, uh, let's see, I'll go in order. Um, Councilmember Pat, do you have anything additional?
Um, hold on, just look at my notes. Uh, I think that's it for me.
Uh, Councilmember Zuluaga?
Yeah, I have, I have a couple. Um, I talked about last time we met, that I would like to see a budget line item for the police dispatch, what the police dispatch uh, is costing the city. And the basis I had for that, and I continue to have for that, is that um, there are discussions happening uh, county-wide about looking at the feasibility of a shared dispatch. And um, they're doing a um, nine-one-one, El Paso nine-one-one is giving a grant. I believe our police chief, he's not here, so we can't verify that, but he uh, entered into, um, or is entering into an agreement with them on behalf of Teller County for a hundred and thirty thousand dollar grant to do the feasibility of a shared dispatch. It might not pan out to be anything, but if we don't know what our dispatch costs us, we're really going to be on the back foot to even uh, have a meaningful discussion about that. So, my suggestion is we get started on it, on our part of it now, and reflect in our budget what we are allocating for our dispatch.
Can I, can I hold you up right there for a second?
Sure.
Just put a pause. Uh, Emily and Darren, um, I flipped to the police operations page. Uh, I don't see what he's talking about. Are, are you aware? Um, it doesn't show up in our budget. I, I'm not sure what we're talking about here.
Do you want to tell me which page, Robert, so I can take it to it?
I'm sorry, I can't understand what you asked me.
What page do you want?
No, I want, I don't have that page in your new budget in front of me, but it's the, uh, the expenditure for the police department and where the expenses are allocated for the dispatch. Well, there is no, that's my point. There is no line item or reference for dispatch, and I'm asking that it be reflected in the budget, so that we have an idea of what we're expending as a city on our nine-one-one dispatch, so that when it becomes mature in this budget cycle, on a county-wide level between the other first responders, that we have some idea of what we are, what we have and what we're coming to the table with. It may not, it may come to nothing. I'm not even trying to prejudge what the findings are going to be about it. But the, our police chief is in the midst of, of having that study conducted on behalf of the county here coming up. Uh, to my understanding, it's supposed to be happening next year.
Thanks, Robert. Um, if I can, I think Miles is here to, he can respond, but I will tell you, part of the study will provide that information, that data as well. They'll have to look at that in the comparison.
I'm, I'm sorry, uh, excuse me, Darren. You're mumbling, you're, you're, it's not coming across your microphone clearly, what you're trying to say.
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yeah, that's better.
Okay, so, yes, so, Miles is here. He can, he can talk more to this. He's a panelist right now. But I will, I will say that the study does intend to cover and do comparisons. It will cover that. It will, it will talk about the cost specifically, cost comparison of what consolidation would mean, what cost savings it would mean. So, Miles, if you can, since you're the one that, that sits on the board.
Can I, can I interrupt a second?
Sure, sure.
The, the question I heard from Robert, sorry, uh, Mr. Zuluaga, was he doesn't see a grant entry and a expenditure entry. I think that's what I heard, uh, on, on this reporting. And um, so, maybe the chief can also mention why we don't see that, or if we shouldn't see it. I don't know.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, let's clarify. I'm, I'm not asking, that grant is, uh, that's a great question, though. I hadn't thought about that, whether that should be something reflected in our budget. I thought that was something that's happening on a county-wide basis. So, but you're right, maybe he can clarify that. That's great.
It is actually, it's on page five, the, the grant. Is that what you're talking about? Page five of the budget?
Could you pull it up on your, can you pull it up on your screen, Darren? Because we.
Yes, sure thing. One second. All right. So, the, this is just a portion of the funding as it relates to PSAP, right? So, um, this is, there you go, it's in front of you right now. I'll try to make it a little bigger, but that is the line item where the, the intergovernmental transfer from, we're going to receive two hundred thousand dollars this year, which funds, I believe, Miles, if you want to chime in, I think fifty percent of the salaries of the, of the dispatchers. Um, and, and this would be the same whether it would be the sheriff's office or, or the uh, Cripple Creek. These funds are the same proportion for any PSAP that would um, be established or consolidation of, of two PSAPs. So, it, this is generally, I think, was this for eight? Miles, are you there?
Yeah, that is for eight dispatchers. Uh, PSAP stipend is twenty-five thousand dollars per position, which uh, multiplied out, comes to uh, two hundred thousand dollars. So, um, the directors of the El Paso Teller nine-one-one board decided that it would be, um, they're willing to fund a hundred and forty-four thousand dollar study to see if this is even feasible. There's a lot of talk about how great it would be. Um, however, there's no data behind it, other than a lot of um, um, unsubstantiated um, opinions. So, this is actually going to give us some solid data, and hopefully later, later rest, um, a lot of the anecdotal information out there. Um, it may be a good move. It may not be a good move. Um, you know, every dispatch center, you know, the sheriff's office, Cripple Creek, they also get twenty-five thousand dollars per dispatcher. So, that amount is being provided by the board currently. However, uh, there's a caveat, year to year, um, that number is evaluated, and it may not be there next year. So, that may go away for the sheriff's office, Cripple Creek, as well as Woodland Park and the big agencies in El Paso County. So, it's something that we're cautioned every year not to plan for, not to budget for. If the uh, board has the wanting to do it, they will do it. Um, and so, that's where this um, uh, study's being funded. Um, it's not appropriate to have that um, hundred and forty-four thousand dollars in our budget. That's coming from the El Paso Teller nine-one-one authorities' budget. Um, and hopefully, we'll get that study started sometime early next year and see what it finds.
So, Chief Miles, uh, can you, can you leave that up there for a second?
Okay, sorry.
So, Chief Miles, uh, that's your employee cost that I see there. But how about, I mean, some of the other things that I thought were, are salient to the whole feasibility of this is the idea of the radios, the operations. I mean, you, you must have some infrastructure costs that it costs for this, for the city as well, and that's your employee cost. But how about the? But how about the, you know, all the pieces of the radios, the, all the rest of it? What is that? Surely you've got a budget, you've got something budgeted for making sure that it runs seamlessly.
Absolutely. And a lot of that's handled through the El Paso Teller 911 Authority. So if it's a 911 piece of equipment, 911 services it. So we're not getting billed on that. We do get a small bill for the, to use our radios, but that's pretty much the only bill. Our $600,000 radio system that we have, that I thought far enough ahead in advance to have installed, that was paid for by 911 Authority. That didn't get paid for by the city. So that's something I've been working on for a long time, is to make sure that our dispatch center is able to handle what our current load is, as well as well into the future. We're about, we can handle probably the next eight years of increase in call volume with our current equipment setup.
So when you have maintenance on those, does that come out of the city budget, or is that going to come out of a 911 budget?
That comes out of the 911 budget. The 911 technicians come up, they're on call 24/7, and they take very good care of our system.
And computers?
And our computers that are run, anything that runs 911 in our dispatch center is serviced by the El Paso Teller 911 Authority.
Okay.
So this isn't coming out of the city budget.
Now, let's, let me ask you a silly question here, Emily and Darren. Here's, here's $200,000 coming in. If that went away, we certainly, we just talked about a thing where we're trying to find $60,000. Where would we find $200,000?
That's a good, that's a good point. I mean, it could happen, but Miles has given the impression that there is some degree of stability now, at least for a few years with that. But you're absolutely right. It does, it produces a structural budget deficit, deficit for us if it goes away. We would have to do budget cuts. So it would, $62,000 plus if we lost these, it'd be another $200,000. Yeah, there would be some tough cuts in the overall budget. Where that comes from, council would have to give you priorities. I have no, I really, I mean, I know where we have some of the highest priorities, where council doesn't want cuts. Just, good point. You're absolutely right. The reduction of $200,000 would be tough, that would come directly out of general fund.
And Mayor, if I may, that did happen to us. I believe it was either 2016 or 2017, the authority did not fund those stipends. And we were expecting $160,000, and it never materialized, and we had to figure out how to absorb that shortfall at the last moment. So, you know, we're working off a five-year budget, we're hoping that the board will be able to stick to the current stipends, but I would say it was either 2016 or 2017, we were short $160,000 that never showed up, and we had to figure out how to cover that. And now they did the other agencies, the sheriff's office as well as Cripple Creek, they also did not receive their stipend per, per employee.
Yep, I remember that.
This is essentially-
Council-elect Alfieri, you said you had to figure out where that money came from. Do you recall where that money was, where that money did come from?
I do not recall.
It wouldn't have come from the unrestricted fund bonds, because we can't spend that. But I did look at 2017, that that did not materialize, that $160,000 that was budgeted.
Let's, it was a different scenario then, too, Miles, right? We did have a little bit of excess revenue above revenues versus expenditures at the time. We just had to, we had to reduce the number of capital expenditures at the time to accomplish. I think the issue now is that we are at, we're $2,000 above capital versus, revenue versus expenditures. So this is a more difficult situation in a, in a reduction of, you know, in terms of where we're at today. But Miles, you're good. Do you think that, we think we're going to be good on this for a couple of years?
I can't commit to future, old members here, but it's set up to be good for the next five years for all three, well, actually, all dispatch centers in El Paso County and Teller County.
Could I ask who's doing this study and when is it planned?
They're looking at using Mission Critical, they have a gold standard in the industry. They recently helped the sheriff's office with their build for their center. They helped Cripple Creek with their center. They are head and shoulders above the previous organization that conducted a study in 2015. So they come highly recommended by the CEO of the 911 Board. And they've also worked with organizations in El Paso County that have looked at consolidation.
Are they looking to do this in like summer of 2021 or something?
I'm pushing to get it started January or February, if possible, to get the ball rolling. There's a lot of, a lot of parts that go into this, and it's a $144,000 study, and they get right down to the, to the brass tacks of everybody's operation. So it's an outside, disinterested third party. We're taking all the politicians out of it, you know, no disrespect, but we let the people that do this for a living to look at it and see what, what they think. Does it make sense, or does it not make sense? And what's the best for our community?
You don't want to be herding cats, huh? Okay.
So Darren, if I can just go back to, you had it up on the screen, I don't have it on my draft budget, or I'm on the wrong page, where your $200,000 is. I'm on page 18 and I don't see it.
No, page five.
Oh, you're on page-
It's not going to be on page 18. That comes in through another line item. So page 18 is actually the post department budget.
So we're on line, page five?
There it is, right there. 3331.
It's on the revenues page, pages, page five.
Thank you, I see, I see it. Okay.
Very good.
So thank you, that, that's, lets me see where it is, that's good. Thank you, Miles, that was, thank you.
Anything else, Robert?
I have one other, one other area of concern that I am not willing to just allocate without examination, and that is the third of a million dollars that we are authorizing for the WAC. I requested at a prior meeting some questions be answered so we can drill down on these numbers more carefully. And this is a perfect time to do that because of the COVID crisis, and I'm just not prepared to sign off on another supporting of the, the way that the WAC is running at the moment. So I'd like that to carefully examine and unlike answers to those questions before. I think that that's my final number on operations for WAC.
We, I'm aware you've asked some questions. Are we at a position to restate those, or what's, what's the situation there?
Well, let me preemptively, Councilmember Pfaff had a question that was probably more simplified than binding. And Jim, was that you wanted to see a balance sheet and a profit and loss on, in real time for the, for the, the pool?
Yeah, I think the numbers that we've been working with so far have been somewhat helpful, but not entirely clarifying.
So what I put proposed in, in an email back in September was some statistical records over the past three years of each hour that we are open, and I have this if we want to, I can read them, that's fine, but otherwise we can, I can resend this if people need it. But each hour that we're open, for example, Monday from 8 to 6, Tuesday 8 to 6, et cetera, for each month, for each year, and then for each of the three years, recognizing that the COVID statistics are going to be an anomaly. Second, exact numbers of guests in each hour time slot. Check-in will have these records. So how many people are in at 6 o'clock? How many at 7? How many at 8? And whether we're getting maximum clientele for the coverage we have in terms of staff. Three, break down further to define the exact number of individuals, however many John Does of local citizens using the pool. If one citizen goes every day, that's not 365 people, that's one, that's one client. And I'm saying that because I'm trying to get an understanding of what percentage and proportion of our population are having the advantage of the pool, or taking advantage of the pool, versus what it's costing us out of the public purse? And how we can better drill down on whether that means promoting it outside of the city, or if there's other ways that we can get some clarification on income generation and ways to, to offset the costs that it's costing all the citizens. And I'm just going to clarify, I love the pool, I love it a lot. I've got to see the numbers come down. Four, exact numbers of out-of-town visitors using the pool. So are we taking advantage of the Olympic Club out of Colorado Springs? Are we taking advantage, or are we getting, are we getting any traction with any advertising we're doing of the aquatic center? And are people showing up, saying, yeah, I came up from Colorado Springs, I heard you had a great aquatic center? Five, number of staff working at each hour time slot that it's open, and that will help us contrast to the number of guests that are coming in each one, and whether we're at maximum efficiency, or whether we should change our hours, and therefore decrease some of our operational costs of staff. The cost of operating per month, by month, in each of those three years. So what is it costing us, January, February, March, April? What are the changes in that? I know some of those will be maintenance costs and operational costs that are, that'll be constant, but some of it will differ. Seven, and I already stated that our COVID numbers will differ, and that will help us even more carefully track targeted usage hours versus cost. So even pulling, extracting our data out of the COVID use, I believe, would be helpful for us. The eighth issue is, this will help us determine what percentage of the community and visitors use the facility, and how to equitably apportion citizen dollars to its running and the maintenance, and what creative solutions can be brought to bear to offset the costs or restructure hours of usage.
Good evening, Mayor Carr and Councilman Zuluaga. This is Parks and Recreation Director Cindy Keating. I tried to keep up with your list, and I think I just wanted to read back to what you're looking for, to make sure that I've captured everything. The hour of operations, number of guests for each hour, breakdown of individuals, who's local, who's not local, and the income that's generated by them. We do, and then the resident versus non-resident, and how our marketing campaign has worked. The number of staff each hour, monthly cost of operations, and then if we need to consider a resident, non-resident fee, I think is what you were asking. If I could just address a couple of these, I've started working on those after listening to the October 21st meeting that I needed to miss. So I started working on some of this data. I didn't have this whole entire list. I can tell you that our daily entries are not tracked by resident, non-resident at this time. When they come in, they pay their fee, and they swim, and then they leave. I can tell you that those that participate in programs or purchase punch passes or just our passes, they set up accounts in our software, and one of the questions in that software is, are you a resident or non-resident? So we do have some of that. What we're tracking from the past three years is about a 60/40 split right now, with the data that I can find, 60% resident, 40% non-resident. When you ask about if our marketing plan was, is working for us, well, last year, towards the end of the year in 2019, the marketing plan was just starting to kick off, and we were just beginning to track where these people were coming from and where they were learning about the aquatic center. This year, we don't have a very strong marketing plan because we don't have a very strong operations, hours of operations out there. I can tell you that we are getting Colorado Springs people coming up here because we do have one of those facilities that offers a little bit more than some of them down in Colorado Springs. Did I miss anything on the list? And I will promise that I will continue to work on this. It's not an easy task to go back and gather all this, but we're working on two different systems, but we can do our best to gather that information.
My request would be that Robert send his questions once again, or for the first time, whatever, to you, so you both have the same set of questions to work from, and appreciate you working through those as, as you're able.
So Cindy, I'm happy to send those to you again. If you look in your emails from 9/27/2020, it is entitled Re-WAC-Work Session-2020 Budget 9/24/20. But I will send it to you again after we, after we finish here tonight.
Thank you for that date, because I am kind of an information hoarder myself, so I should be able to find that email.
Okay, very good.
I think we're, is that, is that up for you, Robert?
I think it is. I just have one clarification in our previous discussions and consensus. I heard the city attorney tell us that it was, it's simpler for us to take the business license fee and just drop it to $35 now, as opposed to doing it in stages. Did we come, did, I guess I'm going to ask you, Emily, did that translate into you adjusting the budget for a decrease in the business license fee to $35? Or are you still tiering it at 4250 and then 35 in 2022?
There wasn't a tier, actually.
I, I think that's my fault. I, I thought it was all in one fell swoop, but I confused the two tiers with the two steps. And so we're doing two steps, right?
Correct, that's correct. It was-
That's correct. So we have sent out letters, starting to send out letters. It's 4250 for 2021 business license, because otherwise we'd have to find an additional $15,000 to cut again from our budget if we were to step down to the $35 level.
Yeah, in reviewing the ordinance presented, I, today, I understand that it's a two-year process to get to 35. That's the way it currently stands.
And, and I had heard, I thought, maybe I misunderstood what Jason said, but I heard him say that that was, that was problematic from a legal standpoint? Or was it more problematic for you, accounting-wise, to make it in two-step? I thought it was, one way was simpler than the other, and I just don't recall which it was.
I can clarify, because we talked about this last night with the mayor. The intent was, the problem was that there was actually two different steps in the, in the same year. So a $50 would be the initial fee, and then there would be a 4250 next year, and then a $35 the next year, right? So the concern was, is that the administrative staff time in determining whether a business license was a, was a first license, or was a, it was a second year license, you know, time spent trying to figure that out. So the thought was, let's simplify it, let's just do like we've done historically when we reduced fees. One being the vendor fee was an example of when we did this, we did it over a two-year period. And we were able, and the other thing is, this data has to go to our automated system, the SET system, and we have to send this to them. So it also simplifies the process with the SET system in keeping to just one, one business licensing fee number versus two. Emily, you have anything to add to that?
No, I don't. I just wanted to clarify that, yeah, that we wouldn't be able to do, the fees reduce that to that level.
All right, thank you. We're well past our two-hour break, but I'm going to look at this. We have inputs from Council-elect Alfieri, but I'm going to preface this with the fact that she's new on this, and as enlightened as she is about all this, I would couch this with, I'm going to let her go forward and talk about anything she would like, but I think she will, over the next weeks, have much more clarity to bring to us and lots of good, fresh ideas. She was freshly elected with record numbers. And Stephanie, if you'd like to- And Stephanie, if you'd like to step forward and if you have anything else you'd like to put forward, this is your chance, please.
Thank you, Mayor Carr. One of the things that I just needed further clarification on is to understand in the city clerk budget, specifically the expenditures for the cemetery. The current year's budget was at 20,000, but year-end projection is 30,000. And then next year, we have budgeted for 60,000. And I was hoping to get a better understanding of, A, why we're, you know, over 50% of what was budgeted this year, and then why it is three times as much next year.
I can answer that for you, Stephanie, if you'd like.
Please.
So if you've been following along with council, you'll see that we're looking to expand the cemetery, and so those additional expenses or capital expenses for us to do the sonar and survey that we've been talking about for the past year to get that work done and some road construction.
Okay, so is, does the expenses for the cemetery, do those usually run at $20,000 a year without the sonar and road improvements?
No, the $20,000 this year includes the sonar, and then the money for next year included the survey and the road improvements. But council then recently authorized us to also get started on the survey this year and bring an appropriation to them if we can get it done.
Okay.
So that's why the 30,000 is this year versus 20,000, that was an authorization by city council, and then the other, well, previous authorization, but then the 60,000 next year was part of the capital plan. If you look in the capital plan, it's part of that as well, Stephanie.
Darren, can you bring up page 10? I've got an old version here that doesn't really know what we're talking about.
Yeah, one second. Can you pull it up?
Thank you.
Yeah, and page 10 does have that note about that the projection for 2020 is higher because sonar and survey were added.
Yeah, I'm looking at an old copy, so I'd appreciate it.
Right there at the bottom, number three, note three is there, cemetery capital. So 20,000 originally budgeted and 30,000 expected for year-end projections.
Where's the 60 for the roads?
60 is, I believe, maybe?
It's under parks, buildings, and grounds.
Okay.
It's, it's, this is Michael Lawson, it's actually under the ACM budget.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
7500, it's okay.
I knew it got moved somewhere, I couldn't remember.
Yep.
Right there, page 11, funny.
Got it.
Why is it on ACM?
He's taking over all that. ACM's taking over that.
Okay.
Thank you.
And also I hope that you would find 2500 a little further up that same page for just regular operations. So, very minimal.
Oh, cemetery, yeah.
Thank you, sir. Stephanie, anything else?
Yes, I wanted to clarify at one point, I believe, it'd be...
Close to the mic.
Sorry, is that better?
It is now, yep.
Sorry, it'd be fund for police operations, there's the $60,000 for the HVAC system. At one point, do I recall that that was being talked about, that it was going to be covered by the CVRF funds?
That's correct. Unfortunately, and Michael and I had a discussion about this as well, the, what's the term used, Michael? That it has to be complete before the end of the year?
Right, so whatever improvement is made has to be delivered and performing for the guidelines from the feds. And so, but by the time we got around to considering that, we just didn't have enough time prior to the end of the year to completely execute the project.
So that will not be covered by the CVRF funds, then?
I, I know we were considering design phase components, but I'm not sure if we were able to get those done prior to the end of the year. I would have to ask one of my colleagues on that.
Yeah, Robin, I don't know if you, we talked about around, I think, 10,000 of the 60,000 being from design, possibly being able to get that accomplished by the end of the year, but there are so many projects, I'm not quite sure that's going to be, going to be able to be accomplished, Robin.
Yeah, I don't know that they're going to be able to get that accomplished. I know that Haynes was working on a proposal, and they are, I owe them a phone call back. But also, my discussions with the state grant administrator kind of led us to believe that, because it's an existing system, upgrading that system would not qualify for CVRF funds.
Thank you, Robin.
Anything else, Stephanie?
Stephanie, on that one, on that point you're talking about, CVRF funds, Mike, Michael, are you looking to use any of those funds to improve the audio/video of the Zoom calls? It's just, it just seems from what I see everywhere else, it just seems low quality.
Yes, councilmember, we are looking at making improvements to the chambers AV system with some of those funds, and we've ordered a number of pieces of equipment to make that happen. And we formed a very helpful partnership with Caris Bible College to provide technical assistance in making that happen, and they're helping us get the equipment ordered and installed, and been very helpful in that. So yes, you are correct.
Awesome. And is that going to include making sure that all of the council members, if we are moved back to being all remote again, that that allows us all to have, I mean, like it's been, Stephanie's been in and out and in and out here, just are you considering that as part of your equation?
That's a good question. I am not quite sure on that level of technicality how that might work. We can certainly set you up with headsets, like the one I'm using right now, which works very nice, and it never leaves the distance from my mouth, so I might just add that. But we, we will, we'll do what we can with the time allowed to make sure that we maximize the quality that we're getting.
I think, Darren, we're probably close to the end of our planning on CVRF. In the next couple of meetings, maybe we could get a report of some sort.
Correct. Today's actually the final, was the suspense for the final third iteration of business nonprofit and resident grants. So we're getting really close to that, and we will be, we're closing out a lot of projects that are related to this as well, so I do believe we can probably have something for you in the next couple of weeks, probably, yeah, next couple of weeks. And as you see, I'll send you an email once we get to all the council where we stand, and then brief it in, in the council meeting.
Appreciate that, thank you very much. Stephanie, anything else?
I have one more theme, Mr. Mayor. This is page 57 of the budget, the actual budget, page 57, not PDF, page 57. And the 520 fund, understanding that we were doing a flat budget this year, there is an increase in salaries from last year's budget of 55,100 to 58,000. Can someone help me understand why that number increased?
I'll let Kip chime in really quick on this one, but I will tell you, the intent for a flat budget is focused on the general fund, not the enterprise. We're talking about the enterprise. The reason why it's, it's focused on the general fund is because that's dictated by the charter. The charter requires us, in a situation where a budget is not approved, it must go forward as, as flat, and that's why it is in the position it is. There wasn't a discussion about the enterprises, our water safety and environment from a perspective of wastewater treatment, that there would be a flat budget because the cost of doing business would, would not necessarily allow us to do that. So I want to let, are you available on here?
Yes, sir.
Can you elaborate on the fifth field service person?
So, on page, Stephanie, did you say 57 or 58?
57. That's the budget that I have.
Okay. So are you looking at the wastewater administration expenditures?
Yes.
Okay. I just have a different page number, so I just want to clarify. So every year, finance will calculate the salaries and benefits for our employees. They did not increase, actually. I think it was just a, just a small oversight as far as what we were projecting for 2020 to, and we're just holding it same for 2021. However, I will say I would like to put in there an increase because when operators gain higher certifications, they do get raises with those, which is part of our policy. But at this point, it is meant to be flat. I don't know if Emily wants to chime in on that one.
Yeah, I believe I was just looking at what was projected for 2020 and then keeping that the same, you know, rounding for 2021. And again, I did not know that our, the enterprise funds are different in how they're funded, of course, they're fee-based, so looking at, you know, that, I was not keeping in mind necessarily. I, in general, I was, but I don't think I was keeping in mind the flat budget for the enterprise funds as we've discussed.
I'd add to that, so, like I said, the increase for year-end projection in regards to the 2020 adopted budget, more than likely is due to the fact that one of our operators tested and received a higher pay with that higher certification because they obtained additional responsibilities, and it was just carried forward to 2021. I hope that answers your question, but I'm, you can tell us some other ways to phrase it at me, I guess.
I, I apologize. Could I get that page up? I'm looking at an old version.
Page, page 57 there. It's, it's, wait a second, I'm sorry, I'll push it up. My apologies, I was sharing it. There you go. This is the page, right?
Yep.
Okay. Right here, where you show a difference of 55,000, budgeted 58,000. But it looks like what Emily did was just round up the number from year-end projections to, to the budget request.
Oh, I was looking for a huge increase, so that's why I was confused. Thank you.
That's, that's good operator, and I could speak to the operator. So one more quest, who was a C-level operator, obtained his B this year, which would be that increase, or very similar to that. If we go back, all the way back to the end of the budget where the positions are in and those salaries, you could see an increase from a C operator to a B operator and the increase in pay that comes along with that.
And then the same people...
On operations.
Wastewater field services?
Yeah.
That's what we were talking about before, was about the field services. So that's where it goes from 82 to 97, and I think Emily, you responded to that before. That was a cost allocation change?
What happened was I had missed for, excuse me, so water and wastewater field services, when you're looking at those in the water and the wastewater budgets, those are the same people, and they're split amongst water and wastewater, 65-35, 65% to 35% wastewater. And I had just not calculated for wastewater in having a full staff. We are looking to hire a fifth field services for 2021. So that would be that fifth staff in that portion for wastewater, because you will see there is an increase in the water field services as well.
So, and I'll just clarify a little bit, our field service crew is a five-man crew. Currently, they're operating with four, and they have been for some time, because we were at difficulty spilling that fifth position. But what I noticed in the budget was that fifth position was not, budgeted for that amount wasn't in there, because we were basing it off of just current staff year-end projections, so that's why it's in there.
Kat Sipuliss, you said that this was also reflected in the water field services? That it's, it's a split between wastewater field services and water field services, correct?
It is, it is split, so...
I ask because I do not see an increase under the water field services salaries.
Right, and the reason for that is that 35% portion of it probably just wasn't in the wastewater. So it was actually in the water field services, but it wasn't in the wastewater field services portion. That makes sense.
So these are basically corrections to the first draft?
Correct.
Thank you.
So the, and, and also the, if you look at the wastewater field services, you'll see that 2020, it was adopted with having five, but you'll see that the year-end projections are quite a bit less because of having four. And so then that was brought back up for 2021 based on having the full five staff.
That was without including part of it in wastewater, correct?
Close to the mic, please, Stephanie.
Sorry, that was without including part of it in wastewater, correct?
Correct.
That's correct.
Anything else, Ms. Alfieri?
Thank you. I think that covers my list.
Well, I think we're at the end of this at this point.
Alleluia.
I think, I think Darren and I will get together and see if we think we heard the same things next day or so. And with that, any last comments going, going? Mr. Pfaff, Mr. Zulaga?
Nope.
All right, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Night.
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 Night.